Good evening, everyone. Before we start our meeting this evening, I have a presentation to make to the Samaritans' Purse. Dear Samaritans' Purse family, The City of Grand Forks is extremely grateful for your help during the recent flooding and would like to extend a profound thank you to your organization for the hard work and the tireless effort that your organization has provided for our great municipality. Samaritans' Purse has demonstrated an above and beyond spirit with regard to cleanup and recovery from our flooding disaster this spring. Your emergency disaster relief program provided urgently needed assistance for our residents by providing critical support for the people to give the community a chance to rebuild their lives here in Grand Forks in Sea Canada. Without this extraordinary support, something that could have taken months only took weeks to be accomplished. And for that, myself, council, and the entire community are forever grateful. Thank you. Could I have someone please come up?
Yeah, why don't we get more of these?
We got all the orange shirts against the wall.
Come on, everybody, come on up. You're all part of this group, come on up.
Okay, tall in the back, short in the front. All right. Three, two, keep smiling, keep smiling, keep smiling. Everyone's got a good one. Okay. Hold it, hold it. There we go, there we go. All right, keep up the smile. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. I just may make a brief comment. I don't know how many of you know the work of Samaritans' Purse, but I found out that they managed to do 117 homes. And that's basically from scratch, taking everything out and gutting them and then sanitizing them. And at a conservative estimate of, I think you used the figure of maybe about 20, between 15 and 20,000, because I'd heard from another company that they may charge up to 30,000 to clean out a home and do all of that work. They saved us virtually millions of dollars. And so, we're so grateful for Samaritans' Purse and everything that they've done to help our community. So, thank you, Mayor Conrad, for the recognition to them.
Thank you, everyone, for your patience and cooperation with this because they definitely deserve that kind of recognition for our community. They did a wonderful job and they're still going at it. All right, I'd like to call this meeting Monday, June 25th, our regular meeting to order. All right, first on the agenda is the annual report for 2017. Recommendation is that council receives the 2017 annual report and considers submissions and questions from the public. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carried. All right, moving on to item three, which is the adoption of the agenda. I have three amendments to the agenda and I will reel on your diligence for this. We will be moving item 5A, the Vienna Woods petition, to 5B. We will be moving 11A, flood recovery update, to 5A, and adding item 5C, the B.C. assessment allegation. May I have a mover on the amendment? Please, Councilor Ross, Secretary, Councilor Tripp. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carried. May I have a mover on the amended agenda as presented? Councilor Ross, Councilor Thompson. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carried. All right. On the minutes. Recommendation, council adopts to June 11, 2018, regular meeting minutes as presented. Mover, please. Councilor Butler, Councilor Ross. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carried. Recommendation, council adopts to June 18th, public hearing meeting minutes as presented. May I have a mover, please? Councilor Butler, Councilor Thompson. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carried. All right, go on to 5B. Sorry, we're going on to 5B, yes.
5A.
5A?
Good evening, Mayor Conrad and council. Thank you for the opportunity to share briefly on the boundary recovery planning. Kind of our functional chart will be the basis of the presentation. I just wanted to speak for a few minutes tonight about the approach that's being taken in recovery management and kind of the critical next steps that we're working on. So, for those who don't know, Graham Watt, I was shortly ago senior planner. I know deputy recovery manager working with the Regional Emergency Program, Regional District, Boundary and the City of Grand Forks, jointly reporting into this unique partnership. There's a huge amount of work in flood recovery. This was an unprecedented flood and also an unprecedented approach to recovery. The province has been very supportive of investing in the community in the wake of the flood this year and is very supportive of a novel approach to how communities recover. So, the recovery manager, Steve Newton, who's had many years in the wildfire service and Emergency Management B.C., he's come in for a three-month stint to basically help set everything up and get an approach going, so I can walk through what that approach looks like. So essentially, because this flood was region-wide and also focused its impacts in the City of Grand Forks, a joint program was really required. So at the top level is where the recovery management team reports to the chief administrative officers of both organizations and jointly to a policy group that has representatives of both the city and regional district and an operations management committee that is made up of senior management from the city and the regional district. So there's a direct reporting relationship, essentially a new organization. And those two committees will be meeting on a bi-week basis, is our assumption. So, there's going to be a lot of information flowing through there from the C.A.O.s and from the representatives. There's opportunity for regular updates to council and board and then also over to the public. So, a key part of that is the role of the information officer and flow that will be coming from that. So that's a really important part of the setting that's going to be determined. But this afternoon, speaking of information, we wrapped up the first situation report. I just sent it off to our team to pass on to council and portions of it will be making its way into the public view in the near future, I understand. So the way that a typical week will look is we'll have a report coming out on Monday that goes out to all the management, to all the regional stakeholders, onto the people that are sort of on the outside of this thing and that will be able to get through to a lot of people. That way, if there's any stories that are coming out of it and they need to go to the newspaper, there's a chance for connecting in right there. So, just going to look on the right side, yeah. So essentially, up at that top end, we've got a really, really good tie-in to the organizational strategic piece and a chance to get feedback from council through those directions. So within the recovery management group itself, myself as deputies and Steve Newton as the manager, we've got a recovery assistant and that position is, to be announced shortly, there's an individual who's got quite a bit of capability that might be able to step into that role and also looking at the information officer role. And then there's five spheres of recovery, essentially, that are really interlinked, there's overlap between them. I thank Chair Rowley Russell for this great graphic that I adapted, modified. But infrastructure, so critical infrastructure, 95% of that is within the city. There's a little bit out of midway, a few other spots that are provencally related. But David Reed is the team lead for that and is basically going to be coordinating the recovery work around critical infrastructure, the funding of it through DFA insurance, grants, various components. And it's connected to everything from sewage lift stations to, you know, featured flood control infrastructure that might come because of the analysis coming this summer. The housing and land use is intimately connected to the infrastructure. And so, I'll be basically taking team lead on that as well and having support from a couple of different organizations, including Urban Matters and, you know, the Boundary Family Services and Community Features Boundary. Community Features Boundary Jennifer Wetmore is the lead on the economic and small business recovery work. There's an excellent meeting this afternoon with assessors Dale Wildin at the B.C. Economic Development Association. They're working tightly with the business community, with the organizations to get the representation, get the issues understood and help build the capacity in those groups to recover and build better. There's human dimensions to this that are really tough. Of course, we really recognize the impact of losing out on your home, your family's property, your well-being, your business. There's economic impacts, there's social, psychological. So Darren Pratt at Boundary Family Services is the team lead on that and is going to be taking a really cross-functional approach, a holistic approach at the wellness impacts of this event and working to integrate with other agencies that are already part of their larger family of services. So there's a really good connection. And as part of that interest linearity, he was, for instance, at the economic and small business association this afternoon to look at the interplay there. And then environment and stakeholder support, the Kell River Watershed Authority, Jess Mace, who we know is heavily involved in volunteer management support across during the event. She's also an environmental specialist and so she's working with the province and Mass Environmental on a study of the environmental quality, especially water quality impacts associated with the event and then also looking at other quality issues and then looking at in-stream river hazards. So when we consider the buildings and vehicles and tractors and glass doors and everything else that ended up in the river, the log jams full of debris, which of these are hazards to infrastructure? Which of these are hazards to public health? She'll be leading that assessment and is actually going to be people out this week, sparing that assessment work. One of the really big pieces in this is land use decisions, erosion control, flood protection. It's a huge question. We know it's on everyone's mind and we need to know that we have to come in with the right approach to the questions and support for the right answers. Ultimately, at the end of the day, we're going to have a presentation to council on, let's say, a suite of recommended choices and where there's some different alternatives around the type of future land use in areas most impacted by flood, including flood protection and erosion control. So we have one of the province's leading kind of river engineers, Don Dodson, and others working on a kind of an assessment of what the river is doing. What are they doing in this flood? How did it move around? What did it eat into? What are potential feature flood protection works that need to be considered on a priority basis? And also, what are the costs to the city? The costs to, you know, the public of, you know, building more infrastructure, supporting the movement or relocation of certain parts of certain areas? These are big, huge questions. A lot of people have been talking about them. And so, we've also got urban systems as part of their flood assessment that they were initiated right before the flood to move some of the mitigation options discussion up into this July's work. So what it looks like for council and for the public to know is that this week, Don Dodson will be wrapping up his part of the report with some more technical input. And within two weeks, we'll have a technical study with many stakeholders, many technical stakeholders, provincial folks and everyone in that recovery team to basically analyze the potential options. And from that, there would be reports to council and board about what the choices will be. And so it's an advanced timeline. Not all the numbers will be perfect, but they'll be high enough numbers to know what some of the major options will be. And that's a big focus of our work right now. So, recovery is not a short road. I just read the headline, I intend to read it later tonight, a newspaper article that just came about five years later in Southern Alberta from the 2013 floods. The impacts continue. So we have a devastating flood situation here. I'm just learning of the impacts to the business community. You know, 41 businesses that are still don't have their doors open and perhaps over 20 that may face a long-term loss of entire summer income. You know, there's all the housing impacts. There's lost farm wages. There's a lot of fence in the river. There's many, many people impacted across the boundary. And the focus of this is both regional and specific to the city. And we're hoping to get it right with the kind of support that we're getting. I want to really mention that the strength of support from Emergency Management B.C. and the, what's the word? The encouragement to think outside of the box. They encourage us, instead of getting a half-million-dollar consultant to come and tell us what to do without building any capacity in the community, they encourage us to think about how do you build capacity in the local communities? So this is a challenge, working across multiple teams who have this added to their roles. So that's part of our coordination effort. And that mind, we also are going to be linking with Service B.C. We have really strong relationships with Red Cross. They're going to have a cross-functional liaison role as well as support around that human net needs component. And there's multiple other agencies that have kind of a liaison supporting here. So if you ever send an email and wonder why it takes a little while to get back through, there's a couple hundred coming in per day right now. So, I think that's about what I wanted to cover. I'm just going to quickly scan through here. Yeah, so, it's a varying questions.
Thank you for the...
Thanks, Graham. Just to be clear, then, so you're saying in two weeks, you're going to have a report, which is going to be relatively comprehensive? And I guess you're going to be addressing your strategic focus underneath all five of those pillars, which there used to be four, now there's five. Yeah, and you just couldn't resist. So, that brings us to around July 23rd. And at that time, then, we have decisions to make. And we will have enough information then, technical information, that we'll be able to make decisions with, as I said.
Thank you, excellent question, to the mayor. So the report that comes in two weeks is for a technical working group. From that, there will be a summary of what the decision is. So basically, the technical working group is going to look at the input from the engineers and determine, basically, narrow it down to recommended options, options that are, you know, recommendable, I guess is the word because there's costs associated to all of them. All of them would require further study to get a good estimate of what they cost. We'll be able to get a really high level, you know, based on typical costs for typical construction. Here's what, this much dike and this much river rock and this much, you know, other option might cost. We're not going to be in a position in a month that we'll provide detailed cost breakdowns, but there's deadlines coming up to stall for various grants. And the recommended option that might come from the city's choice, council's choice on it, will indicate which path to go down to get those grants, to get the funding flowing for the different options. So that's essentially, we don't have the final answer, but basically, to get that detailed costing that would come from the decision July 23rd.
I can follow up. Can I just... So what I don't understand is, why are we asking for grant funding when this is actually emergency response funding that the province has already said they're going to give us? So why are we writing grants? And if we tell the province we're going to get grants, then they may not come in with the emergency funding. So why are we writing grants?
To the mayor, thank you. Grants are a key part of it. There's several sources of funding out there. There's funding requests directly, but there's pieces of the infrastructure that are also potentially grant-enabled. So, we are being encouraged to look at all of the above, but it might not be that it all comes from the EMBC's purse. There's many different sources for it. So, the approach is that we can expedite certain things, but if we can get funding from several choices that are going to be over and above emergency response, we're talking about the long-term recovery here as well.
Thank you, sorry about that. So, Graham, then, when we've got the recommendations from that group, at that point, will we be able to go directly to EMBC for certain portions that say we pretty much know we're not going to be able to go down any grant-related avenues for?
I'm guessing this is a little bit unknown at this point, but I think that sounds like a good approach.
Councilor Thompson, you can answer.
Thank you, Your Worshipful, to Graham. The report that's coming out in two weeks, is that a report that will be shared with council? Or is that just for the recovery management team?
To the mayor, this is something that hasn't been determined yet. The process, the workshop that happens to analyze it should be as available as possible to decision-makers. And so we're having the discussion about exactly how that goes. The report that goes to that team is basically something to discuss and chew on. It's going to be like a draft report, essentially. What comes out from that workshop is basically the decision choices at the high level.
Okay, so this is a different report than the one that... Don Wildin? Dave? Dale Wildin? This is a... Nothing to do with that was born. Okay, thank you.
So will it encompass that report, but also?
To the mayor, thank you. The weekly reporting, the situation reports, will encompass contributions from each of the teams. So included in this one, which will be distributed to council, is a short page from Community Features about what that approach is. And then any reports coming from each of their works would also be attached to the weekly reports coming out. So basically, anytime anything is ready to be shared out, it'll be passed through through the weekly reports. The specific engineer's report on options with river and, you know, the approaches to take is, I think that, you know, the first part of it is basically draft work to go into this recovery team discussion. And then following that, you know, I think at some point, we'll deeply engage council in it in advance of the 23rd. I think that's definitely the intention.
Thank you. Councilor Butler and Councilor Hamilton.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, to Graham. Yeah, I really appreciated the meeting that you were able to attend today with regards to economic recovery. And there was five or six people there that were forming a working group that were not just coming to us with responses, but I felt they were really there to listen to council and to hear what was going on for us and our dealings with the community. And they had said that they will have a basic report coming, I think, by the 5th of July, they said, about sort of a high level overview of what they recommend for economic development in our area. And I felt that that team of people really has a good background and a lot of experience in dealing in other communities. So is there anything that you can share with the public about what you think that report might entail? And also, when these updates are coming to us once a week, is that something that we can share with the public? Or how do you want us to communicate that out? I know we're going to have a communications person and it's so important to have that clear communication with so much information coming forward. We need to be concise, even though the public is thirsty for that information. I'd like to be able to share it with them, but I want to make sure that we're doing it in an organized way.
To the mayor, thank you. So the key points on the initial... So the group with B.C. Economic Development Association, there's economic development specialists from various different communities in the province who have come here to do interviews with business people, to talk to farmers, to understand the economic interests that were affected by the flood and then the post-flood issues and how that's affecting everyone. So they are looking what the needs are and making some really high-priority recommendations for initial recovery. Some of that work will include, you know, I believe, a description of funding that should come for support and coordination for the business community and getting the word out that we are looking for business, that businesses are rebuilding, that it's happening from the ground up. I think that there was a really strong message today that that was an initial action that we should really take care of right away. There's some various recommendations, everything from signage and wayfinding to sharing the good news stories, to specific actions that businesses could take. I think this is going to be implemented through downtown businesses association and the Chamber of Commerce and the support of Community Features across the boundary. So there's going to be several points. I think some of the conversations that happen, they indicate that Dale's group thinks are good priority actions and I look forward to seeing that next steps. good priority actions, and I look forward to seeing that next steps. In terms of the situation reports, whether it's the emergency response or the recovery operations, the organization is not paramilitary, but it comes from a background that's based on critical incident command, so an incident command structure like a wildfire response. And so you have typically some kind of hierarchical control structure, and then you have communication booths that feeds that structure's needs. The outside of the organization is usually a different product. And so during the EOC response phase, the situation reports would happen regularly, almost on a daily basis. And sometimes they got out widely to councils and board and that kind of thing. Sometimes they were more within the structure. Our best hope is to have two products, one of them that is basically for within the organization, including council, and another one that takes these and turns them into understandable stuff. Because what happens in here is sometimes abbreviations, sometimes shorthand, assuming that you've read every single other situation report before that. So it's really trying to be pertinent, just today's news, not last week's. And usually, stuff for the public needs to have in the right context, or a right piece. So we're really looking forward to the role of the Information Officer to help us craft those. We don't know yet what it looks like, but we know that's a key need, to make sure that the bigger story, the narratives, the pictures, the graphs, what are there, the 41 businesses that are still out, those pieces that are definitely going to come. I think that we can definitely say that information from these situation reports will go out to the public, but might need to be a second massage first.
Councilor Hamilton.
Yeah, thanks, Graham. I just have a question about the dikes. So the people that are doing the assessments for the dikes and the hydrologists, are they actually province employees, or are they independent contractors? And the second part of that question is, if they come back with recommendations on dike rebuilding, are you bringing that recommendation to council to make a decision on, or will it go directly to the province so that they can work on this?
So part of that process is a little bit unclear. The second part of the question, I think basically, the folks from water stewardship at the province that govern the approval of dikes and that kind of stuff, need to be in the loop early about what the considered options are, so they're part of the technical discussion. But for decisions, council is involved absolutely and makes the call for what goes forward. So there's a little bit of a loop that happens. The first part of the question, the consultants who are working on this are engineers, third-party engineers. One of them is the group that already gets started on our floodplain assessment hazard study this spring, so urban systems. They're moving some of the assessment indication options, which means your dikes, your rockworks, et cetera. They're moving that up to this month so that we can actually have a reasonable understanding of what the options are. We'll probably repeat some of that analysis once they have a hydraulic model built and they know what the actual forces are facing a particular bank. Some of that work might need to be done in advance of something being built. So typically, these are multi-year processes, and what we had initiated this spring before the flood was starting the floodplain study, looking at the new hydrology, starting to understand what the hazards were, what the risks are across the community, and then building a model that can actually evaluate the force flow. Once you identify those hazards, you can say, here's the areas to protect, here's how much water is shooting at that, here's how we start to engineer that structure. So it's a big study to actually make it happen. This showed us what happened in a particular event, but it's not every event. A different event might have a much larger force coming down the grabby, for instance, the 1948 flood. Or a different event might see several inches of rain on top of a saturated floodplain. Every event is different, and we need a model to actually evaluate what a good flood control structure is. I think doing something over rapidly in response to a single event can create a legacy of future problems.
I think the point I was getting at was, if the province is involved with determining the condition of the dikes and what needs to be done with them, will they be forthcoming with the money? So if it has to come back to council to make a decision, I actually would prefer that if they know what the problem is, that they get out there and fix it and put the money into it so that it doesn't have to go through that step and get further delayed by us having to request grant funding or anything. So I know, how quickly will that money be available to do whatever it is that's recommended?
Good morning, Graham. Thank you. That's a good question. We'll take it back for feedback. And please do send, keep on with the questions, because there's a lot that we still have to answer. Dolores, I'm just wondering, is there anything in terms of the discussions we've had with the provincial banking authority that would be worthwhile to share here in terms of their role supporting our analysis? Have you talked to some of the folks there?
I have a meeting next. Speaker asked me.
Okay.
You're the speaker. Yes, I have a meeting with the EMBC's Secretary of Finance. Soon.
Soon. So we can get these questions.
Just scheduling. So very good. So what role does the independent engineer play in all this?
Good morning, Mayor. So the independent engineer is a specialist on how rivers move, and he's built thousands of, I don't know, thousands of projects, or thousands of installations of various different pieces of many different types of flood and erosion control structures. So he is looking at it from the perspective of, what did this river do? What are the forces interacting? What are the areas under threat? And what are some options for land use for different flood control structures? What's a good feature for these affected areas? Those are kind of his recommendations. He'll be feeding that into this discussion that we're scheduling for a couple of weeks from now. And our group at Urban Systems will basically be evaluating, costing out, looking at what those options are. So it's been kind of a dialogue over the next couple of weeks from engineers.
So you're dialoguing with systems?
Yep. On a multiple-weekly basis.
Thank you, Mr. Watt, for that recovery update. And we now move on to item 5B from Corporate Services. Recommendation is that council receives a memorandum from Corporate Services regarding the petition standing strong for Viviana Woods for information. Over to you, Councilor Butler and Councilor Lawson. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry.
Okay, I just thought that we might discuss what we discussed earlier today about the status of the sale of that land. All right, so council received confirmation today that that land sale has gone through of Viviana Woods property out by the airport at this time, though that's all the information that we've heard recently.
Thank you, Councilor Butler. Okay, moving on to our next item, which is 5C, BC Assessment Delegation. Good evening, and welcome.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you with you today and present just a short presentation, essentially, in general terms, how we rely on property assessments, and to a degree, the impact of this year's floods on how we create next year's assessment rule. Bear with me, I'm not going to go through all these topics, because this presentation was for a different presentation. But one of the things there, he noticed that he has a cycle and key dates. I think it will be a very interesting point, and feel free to ask any questions at any time. So BC Assessment, for those people who aren't familiar, provides assessments which enables you to raise revenue through taxation to fund the operation of your municipality. We produce an annual assessment rule. Our enabling legislation is the Assessment Authority Act, and we produce assessments using the Assessment Act, which is a different act itself, and provides a lot of statutory legislation that enables us to do our work every year. So as I mentioned, we provide an annual assessment rule. Some assessment organizations produce different types of rules. We identify ownership, we apply that value. We also provide classification of properties and exemptions, which I'll just get into briefly in the next two slides. One of the most important dates that we have is July 1st, and that's where we produce a valuation estimate as of July 1st every year. One of the things that we see in some areas of the province is rapid increasing values year over year. So we produce an assessment rule. We close the rule in early December. We mail the assessment notices in January. At that point, the assessed value as of July 1st could be significantly lower or higher in some cases, because there's a six-month lag before we produce the assessment rule. And then you pay taxes the following July, based on essentially a one-year-old valuation estimate. By having the same date every year used, we can adjust values, and we can adjust sales, and we can use, in the appeal process, we assess, we determine the value as of July 1st each year for the properties under appeal. There's also some properties that have legislative values, regulated values. Those are properties like farms or major industrial properties, for instance. There's three types of approaches to value. Essentially, there's the cost approach. Most homes are done that way. So how much would it cost to acquire a parcel of land and build a specific house? Direct comparison approach, that's where the common townhomes or stratum units, how much does something sell value per square foot? And the income approach, for generally commercial properties or some residential properties like apartment buildings. So we look at the expected income stream over time. Again, there's some properties that don't use market value. Farms is one, managed forests, major industrial properties. Those are very common, other farms. There's various classes of properties and assessments. The assessments reflect the classification, which is based on the use of the property. So if you're using a home, a single-family home, for a business purpose, that would generally fall under class six. Similarly, if you have a commercial building with residential upstairs and commercial on the ground floor, that would have two different types of classification. And the tax rates for each one of those classes can be adjusted by the municipality each year to determine how much taxes you owe for a specific classification. This is the rule totals. Essentially, the residential throughout the province makes up the largest part of the valuation. It's the most common property type and largest value. Exemptions, there's various exemptions based on what you've got. Sometimes you have a church, they have a statutory exemption for the building itself and for the land underneath the building. And you can also pass a remiss exemption. In general terms, churches need an exemption for the areas surrounding the church for parking or additional land. That's usually exempted in many cases through a remiss exemption, and these will be passed each year, essentially. Various exemptions are allowed for under the Community Charter. There's a legal legislation for that. There's also a robust appeal process in BC, and what that allows is that anybody who thinks that the assessment of their property doesn't reflect the market value as of July 1st the previous year, has an opportunity at no charge to appeal their assessment through the Property Assessment Review Panel. It's the first level of appeal, and it's generally a three-person panel that hears appeals. They're generally made people from the community, most often with real estate experience. They're appointed by the provincial government, completely independent of BC assessment, and they allow for a preliminary hearing if someone feels that there's some reason why the assessment doesn't reflect the market value of their home. They're able to present in front of the panel. We do teleconference panels as well, if people want to travel. We have a lot of people that live outside of the province. They're still able to have their appeals for using electronic means of dialing through So the initial appeal period is from January 1st to January 31st. One of the important dates there is January 31st. If someone is intending to file an appeal, they have to file that appeal by January 31st of that year to have a valid appeal. Then after the appeal has been initiated, the Property Assessment Review Panel sits from February 1st to March 15th. Those regular dates, they can sit after March 15th, and they have to hear all the appeals that are filed before them. In some years, this takes a little bit of creativity. In cases in our region, we've heard appeals from the Lower Mainland through our panels because the volume in certain areas is just so large. But we do have the opportunity to make sure that we have enough panel dates to hear all the appeals that are out there. Generally, I'll say about, historically, it's been less than 1% of properties throughout the province that are appealed. In some property classes, it might rise to 1.5%, but essentially, a number of appeals below 1%. It's been historically that sort of way. If people still aren't happy after their initial level of appeal, there's a second level of appeal through the Property Assessment Appeal Board, and that's a more formal level of appeal. There's a $30 fee upon appeal, which is given from the Property Assessment Appeal Board, where there's no fee involved. And the Property Assessment Appeal Board looks at things in a lot more detail. They have a lot of experienced people working for them, generally lawyers or people with strong real estate backgrounds. And they can look at things generally through lay-up written submission, but sometimes through in-person hearing, but generally, it's a written submission, and it's very open space. So it's somewhat higher standard. If you feel that you don't agree with the Property Assessment Appeal Board's decision, you can also continue on to the BC Supreme Court. Any appeals to the BC Supreme Court have to be on a question of law, which is a fairly high threshold. You have to demonstrate the appeal board air and law, or even air and law. Those are, we do have a lot of Property Assessment Appeal Board appeals in the province. Generally, those are commercial appeals. But there is a $30 fee, just a fee. The questions that the appeal process group uses generally assess values, the number one, but also motion for inclusion, and it's a justice as well. That's the percentage of folios appealed varies from 1.3 to 2.2% there, I think in 2000s. Some years, it's very low. That's provincially, generally, the entire commercial, down Vancouver, is the year that it applies to. The other thing we do is, we handle ownership changes as well. We get our information from LTSA and from provincial governments, or property owners in some cases. And we continuously update that and provide that advice to tax jurisdictions. So again, I just want to go over them, please. So this is our key dates in our assessment cycle. So the first period is that appeal period, after people have received their assessment notices, from January 1st to January 31st. That sort of concludes in May, March, and people will get their decision notices in the first week of April. April 1st to April 3rd, or September 30th there. We generally work on new inventory, looking at what's being constructed in the given year. And October 1st to December 31st, we generally work on what's called producing the rule. So we'll look at the sales. The date there of October 31st is probably going to be the most important date for your community this year, and that is the physical condition of permitted use. So physical condition is, if you're, say, building and renting a home, what sort of condition is it as of October 31st? Because that's what will reflect on the following year's assessment rules. Permitted use is things like zoning, if you have a commercial property and you're zoning it, or sorry, if you have a residential property and you're zoning it to commercial, the following year's assessment notice will reflect that commercial zoning. But physical condition, in terms of what's happened with this year's flooding, the previous year's condition date would have been October 31st, 2017. So your 2018 assessment notice and your 2018 tax notice reflects the condition of your property as of October 31st, 2017. The 2019 assessment notice will reflect the condition as of October 31st this year. It's very important to bear in mind, because we'll be looking to see sort of what has been done to impacted properties as of October 31st. If you've restored your home, that would essentially be reflected if your home is still in disrepair, or if it's even demolished, it would reflect that as of October 31st. So if someone's demolished their home, say, on October 15th, that would be reflected on the assessment notice in 2019. If they demolish it on November 15th, for example, it would likely still be in the assessment rule. That's just an important thing for people to keep in mind. Again, sort of, we take the assessed value and using that and the classification of the property, using property tax rates that are produced every year by municipalities, and that determines your property taxes. This is sort of, there's a lot of information available on our website. I encourage everyone to go take a look at it. There's actually a number of videos that I skipped to today that have a lot of information on terms of tax rates and assessment rules.
Councilor Butler.
Thanks for going over that and giving us a basic overview. From what I remember hearing at different conventions, you don't send an adjuster around to look at every single home every year. That's too cumbersome. But I am assuming that because of our situation, you both have more people in town than usual looking at our properties?
You're correct. We don't, in fact, we very rarely enter homes anymore. In this case, there will be a lot more scrutiny. I mean, there already is a lot more scrutiny on what the conditions of the homes will be. We also rely to a degree on homeowners to let us know as well. And sometimes that comes out through the appeal process. Sometimes the people have homes that have been damaged before, say, a tree falls on someone's home. We don't go to a home every single year, and we find out through the appeal process that, yes, there's some significant damage in my home. We hope that we can accurately reflect the condition of all these properties this year on the rule that's produced in December and the LTC will change every first, so we don't have to have those changes. Those serve your interests as well, and also serves the owner's interest.
So you recommend people follow you, then?
If they have an impacted property. Again, if you have an impacted property now, that's good news or good information to have. But really, what we're going to be looking for is, can we visit your home on October 31st, or just before October 31st, to sort of determine what the conditions are. In some cases, we don't necessarily need to be inside, in some cases. In some cases, you know, property owners provide us with photos and information. You want to take a look at that?
Counselor Thompson, Counselor Triglin, Counselor Lewis.
Thank you. In a former life, I was the municipal tax collector for the city. And we relied on the information for, in particular, the addresses and names and addresses of the property owners based on the information received from the B.C. Assessment Authority. Subsequent to my retirement, there was an instance where a property went to tax sale and the information, the letter went to the property owner and address on record. It was learned after the tax sale that went to a purchaser, individual purchaser, that particular property entered and sold. And the purchaser sued the city and was successful. I guess my question is twofold. Number one, when you send out your assessment notices to property owners and if they are returned, what is the practice of B.C. Assessment to determine who the actual property owner is?
So ownership in general is a challenging topic. We generally get most of our information about ownership through LTSA. Someone's property transfers to LTSA, we receive that information. If someone has sold it and not registered that sale with LTSA, that reminds a little bit of a challenge. There's also certain property types, I would say manufactured homes is one of them, where sometimes the ownership transfers and we're not informed of it, it's not reflected from the home registry. Those are challenges. We do get return notices each year. We try to track them down. We keep track of them. The reason why we get them back is not clear, I would say. In some cases, the property owner may have moved and not informed us of their new mailing address. That's different from, you know, someone not owning the property anymore. But our ownership is reflected based on LTSA for the most part. The one challenging aspect of that is manufactured homes because they, the ownership is reflected on the manufactured home registry. And that's not always correct, but we don't have the ability to correct that. Sometimes we do actually are able to correct ownership information when the owner's calling in, or when the vendor calling in. Sometimes the vendor says, "I have sold this manufactured home, but I don't know where it's anymore." You know, that's a real life problem. We deal with that as we can, but for most properties that are held in fee simple, it's the ownership reflected on the LTSA.
This particular case, it was a commercial property, wasn't a manufactured home. So would that not, having something of that nature step back to the Assessment Authority, would that not ring some bells or, you know, raise red flags?
For a commercial property to sell and not be, and not have that sale registered at LTSA is very unusual in my experience. I mean, generally, most commercial properties, I would say 80%, more than 80%, are listed on MLS, transact on MLS with a realtor or someone handling, brokering that sale. The lawyers are generally involved in that and the lawyers will register the sale at LTSA. To have somebody not register that sale at LTSA, it strikes me as very strange and I don't know why that would be, but sometimes owners have various ways of doing business that, you know, they're comfortable with doing, but I would say that's relatively unusual. And I don't know why they wouldn't have registered an LTSA on sale, on sale return. And that's likely the information that we would receive. I think every commercial property that I've ever seen, the ownership on LTSA is reflected on the assessment. I don't know where we kind of lay between that. Sometimes there are long closes in a sale where, you know, I may sell you a property, but there's an 18-month close on that for some reason. These are again, very unusual situations. But in terms of ownership itself, it's difficult for us to go and track down every owner, even if we get a piece of mail returned back from the Assessment Notice returned back from them, to go and find that person, even with the internet these days and with searches. I mean, I've tried to contact property owners that have been involved in commercial transactions and it's very, very, very difficult to track someone down, even with, you know, Canada Ford Run One or Facebook or LinkedIn, this type of thing. I mean, it's very challenging to find people. You have a very common name, it's much, much more difficult. It's usually during tax time that we find out that someone's mail hasn't been received because they get an overdue notice about their taxes and they ask why they didn't receive their assessment notices. Sometimes people get their tax notice but not their assessment notice, even though it's the same, you know, it's different sometimes.
Counselor Triglin, Counselor Ross.
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. So it's my understanding then that next year's property assessments will be based on this year's value as of the end of June, property values at the end of June. And I'm going to ask another question on that. If that's the case, our flood was May 11th. So does that mean then that as of January 1st, all of the properties, and I believe there were close to 400, would all of those properties now be reassessed according to the flood damage that happened to those homes?
That's a very good question. So the definition of the properties is separate from the value of properties in general. And we would look at sales that have occurred post-flood much more closely. I mean, if something's property sold in February or March, it's probably not as indicative as of the, of the market for those properties as something that's sold on July 15th or August 15th or September 15th. I would say that the sales that may have occurred earlier this year, we would likely not put as much weight on them in our analysis. If they're in an area that maybe wasn't impacted by the floods, certainly it would be good evidence of the market value. But yes, we will essentially look at property values and much more closely this year, looking at specific areas and looking at sales that occur later in the year essentially. I mean, those would carry more weight in it.
Thank you. So just a follow-up question on that then. Will you know all of the specific addresses and residences then that have experienced the flood?
The short answer to that is likely yes. I think there's a lot of information that's out there from the Emergency Operations Center. I know we have a racer in our interoptus that's looked at it closely. He's used mapping, he's used aerial imagery, he can sort of determine the likely properties. And if he's including a few extra that may not have been impacted, but be thought are potentially impacted, that's fine. And it's really going to be a question of looking much more closely at the sales that do occur this year. I'm optimistic that there'll still be a fair number of sales that will help us guide our decision-making in terms of what to do with values. I don't know where those directions are going to be necessarily, if they're up and or stable. But there'll be much more analysis time this year in terms of the sales and specifically the sales that occur this year.
Counselor Ross.
Yeah, in this brief, I was hoping Counselor Triglin was going to ask my question. So one of the things that came up today at meeting was many of the homeowners and business owners in town will be rebuilding, renovating. Some of the rebuilds are going to be like from the foundation up, some of them are just going to be major reno's. And so when you're renovating a business or a house, as we know, you're getting new floors, new walls, new windows, new doors, new kitchen, new bathrooms. This will increase the value of those homes and of those businesses. So what program do you have in place to assist residents and business owners who are forced to do these mandatory reno's or rebuilds? So what program do you have in place to keep their assessment low? Because value, there are going to be new homes. So we need to keep those assessments low so that we can get a rate for the next five to 10 years. So what program do you have in place to help those folks?
I'll deal with it in two separate sides, the sort of residential and the commercial side. The short answer is there's no program that we have to keep the assessments low. That's not our mandate as an assessment organization. Our mandate is to reflect the likely selling prices of properties. And we reflect the condition of the properties, the use of the properties. There's no program to specifically keep values low. That's just not something that we're able to do by legislation. When I look at commercial properties, commercial properties are a little different. Commercial properties are value-based on the potential income that they could get. So if a property has been renovated, for instance, and is able to be leased out again, sort of what properties are leasing for? It's not necessarily the place the property that has new drop-in need in a commercial location is necessarily going to generate any more than a property, properties trade or properties lease out based on the anticipated rent per square foot that those have to pay. And if something's renovated, you might rent it more quickly, but there's not necessarily any guarantee that you're going to be able to rent it out for more money than you did before. You might be able to attract a tenant more quickly, but you pay the rents that they're going to pay in a given jurisdiction. It's not as straightforward as saying that your property is going to worth more because you restored it from a commercial property perspective, from a residential property perspective. We'll take a look at the sales that occur. If somebody restores their home and it sells for a good price, we'd like to reflect that in the assessment. If somebody has restored property and it sells, we'd like to reflect that in the assessment as well. But there absolutely is not a program in place to keep assessments low.
Okay, so it sounds like there needs to be legislative changes because the incidence of disaster phenomena such as happened here, we have fires, we have floods, potentially earthquakes, we're being told that this is going to be the new norm. It is disturbing that people who are already struggling and having to rebuild are going to be penalized by having their assessment go up and then their tax rate, their amount of money that they're going to be paying in their taxes is going to be going up. So we actually need a lot of sort of changes in order to address these disasters that we have people that are...
So as an assessment organization, we propose legislative changes all the time. This is a very difficult process to actually manage. In terms of what properties are going to sell for, it's not, it's not possible for me to say that the values are immediately going to go up dramatically in some way. And until you start selling, it's not easy to predict that. I don't know if there's necessarily going to be wholesale changes in the values of properties. We will reflect what properties you're selling for, so...
I think we need to change the entire dialogue because we have to stop looking at these places as real estate, but it's, they're people's homes. They want to live in them and they need to survive and raise their children. And we don't think about our homes as real estate, of them. We think of them as a place that we live. And, you know, this town is going through a hard time and people are struggling and not talking about how it's possible. And so I think that legislative change is something that we can look at in order to deal with that. And maybe the government, maybe, they've admitted that this isn't the norm, maybe they may be more open to discussing those important sort of changes.
Yeah, I, you know, I obviously sympathize with what's happened. You know, I went through several years ago, the fires in Rock Creek, damaging those homes. These were places that they lived for years and suddenly everything they had was gone. They struggled to rebuild. The community is still intact for lack of numbers. It shows resilience. I would say that legislative changes, the most effective way to sort of get those moving forward is likely to be...
Yeah.
You know, we, again, we try and get legislators, you know, to really go through it.
Counselor Adams.
Now, do you receive information from municipalities on development permit applications? So does B.C. Assessment get, like, you don't go around and you don't go inside houses. People have finished their basement or they have done improvements in their house. You can't determine actually unless you look at equivalent sales or close sales within the community, that it's close by and similar square footages or similar block size and amenities. But as far as doing renovations inside the house that have incredibly improved or substantially improved their value, do you get information from municipalities on the development permits that are issued and the values of them?
Sure, I'll just, I'll say one thing. Development permit applications are a little different from just regular building permits. Development permit applications is...
Okay, well, building permits, yeah.
We do get building permits from a variety of sources, sometimes regional districts, sometimes municipalities.
Is it legislated?
It's not legislated, it's...
Which is voluntary?
It's in, it's in the community's best interest to have that information and they often do. And we, so we get permit information if somebody wants to finish their basement or someone wants to add on to their house, we'll put that information generally. What we've done in the last several years is take initiatives that don't have that requirement. There are people that do unpermitted renovations. There are people that add on to their house, that sort of build structures without permit. We know that. And in the last few years, we've used what's called desktop review, where we'll take aerial imagery, a sketch of what we think the house is in terms of the size. We'll overlay that over the aerial imagery and see if there's square footage that doesn't exist on our systems. We'll take a closer look at it. We'll also look at, you have street front imagery. Generally, if you see homes that have new windows or substantially, look substantially renovated from the outside, oftentimes the inside is also renovated. We also have MLS at our, at our, access to MLS. And most of homes, I mean, most, a lot of homes, a large percentage of homes sell between every 15 to 20 years. And we will list their homes, we'll list them with very good photos and we'll, they look at that when we're doing, when we're reviewing the sale of a property, generally we look at the interior condition and we may update the, our estimate of the value of that home for the following rule here, based on the condition, the time of sale. So what that means is that if you have a substantially renovated home and your next door is someone who has a same age of home that hasn't been renovated, rather than move everybody's value up, you may choose just to change the value of the home that's renovated and imply that everybody with, say, a 1960s home has renovated to the same standard that in our mind is a little bit more fair.
Counselor Triglin.
So I'm just wondering, if you wanted to get creative, could you be looking at maybe making another qualification under the homeowner grant? And maybe people who have been involved in disasters could apply for some sort of a reduction as they do if they're under 65 or if they're over 65 or, you know, those different qualifications that you have? Would something like that be able to be an option?
So our enabling legislation is the Assessment Act. The homeowner grant is administered by the Department of Ministry of Finance and Survey of Taxes in some cases. But we don't have a provision within the act that allows that. That seems like a reasonable idea, but there's nothing that we can put in place that would allow that. I would say that everybody should apply for their homeowner grant this year, regardless of whether they've renovated their home or if, you know, if it's a primary residence, just apply for your homeowner grant every year, even if you're not living in it as a child or person. There's also retroactive homeowner grants that can be applied for as well. So there's that mechanism as well, and I think there's something that too as well. But in terms of using something like the homeowner grant to provide relief, there's nothing in our enabling legislation that would allow us to do that. It's certainly something that I think should be included through Ministry of Finance.
Ministry of Finance. Thank you. Ministry of Finance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we move on to unfinished business and it's just come to my attention through our CEO. Hold on, we have a small
Thank you, worship. Just wanted to check through the studio of Councilwoman Flaver for a little discussion. I know at the economic development piece, there was a bit of talk about refining signs and Mr. Gates has a little bit of information that he's willing to supply. So if council would entertain that or if they wanted to wait till July?
Go ahead, Mr. Gates.
Thank you, Mr. Merrick. I have a couple of questions that will enable the project to move forward. So please ask away if they seem out of context, but got seven questions here about the format character of people of the signs. First one is for color schemes, should they reflect the location of the amenity or the type of the amenity?
I think that was determined by the
It was not. No. We had example colors, but we didn't have what they were tied to.
I think it was the type of facility.
Just, so the question, sorry, was whether the color should reflect the location in town, i.e. downtown or city park or out near the pool, or should reflect the type of amenity, be it a financial service or food or gas?
The arrow shows you where the location. Isn't there a standard across the town so that every time somebody drives into town and I'm trying to figure their signs out? Like, just, isn't there a standard?
There, there is the highway standard which we could choose to adopt.
Oh, yeah, that makes sense. No, they already have this approved. Well, because the, so these are directional arrows.
Right.
Right? One will say people law court, one will say city park or spray park. So I think at the meeting, we decided that they would show like what it was so that if it's a sport or a more activity.
Sorry.
You're supposed to talk to the mayor through your backwards. So if it was, like, the location, because there are arrows pointed. So, I mean, we know which the red location is.
Right.
But the color coding differentiated what type of facility it was, whether it was an outdoor recreation or whether it was bank or shopping.
Let me just interject for a second. Do we not have the history of the previous decision that we had on file?
Yeah, we're not. Where are the designs?
Your worship, I think that what we're asking for here, there's a few pieces of unanswered questions that we're still needing to have some answers for. And so this is going to give council the opportunity. If we can get through these answers, then we can get going on the project.
So we're looking for color or symbolization. Is that what we're looking for?
We're looking for whether the color should be coded to a part of town or if the color should be coded to a type of amenity.
Type of amenity.
Type of amenity. We did discuss this.
Next question is whether the signs should have symbols or text. And that is an either-or.
Text. We got a pickled pork, we got a spray park, we've got our parking.
It's like playing Pictionary. It's like, what is that?
Yeah, we looked at text.
And have been some in braille, too.
Try through and feel the sound.
Don't we see, so you go to elevators that are under the parking lot with your braille? The symbols were on the highway signs and the original ones that we were doing. So picking, you know, the restaurants or food, paints.
That was the highway.
That was the highway signs. The ones downtown were text.
Next question is, should the signs display business names or the type of the amenity?
Type of amenity. Yeah, you can't advertise a business and give credit to a business. You have to make a difference.
You'd have to have 144 signs pointing downtown.
Okay, next question is, should, as a theme, should we use the city brand or use the highways color scheme?
The color scheme was determined in this place. Black, with the arrows with the colored arrow in the middle. And those, the arrows where the text was, was replaced so that it could change. It would slide into the arrow and come out and be replaced.
Okay, so. Next question, the maximum number of signs on a post, would you like three, five, or seven as the maximum?
Depends on the height of the post.
Do you get both prices?
You can't read much, maybe more than five, let's say, if you're going by.
Would it not be dependent on the location of the sign, depending on how many entities there are?
Absolutely. But this is just a maximum. So up to how many?
In any given direction?
On any given
Because my, my concern would be if there's, let's say, certain amount of organizations that you're trying to identify and you only put, let's say, three or five and seven is the max. You might have to saturate the max because you would not be addressing all of them then. And that's the concern, is some, some entities were fielded and left out.
One clarification, there's two poles with wayfaring signage, right? So if we had five on each, that's going to be 10 signs altogether because there's just two poles.
So we're talking about having a post near all the critical turns in downtown town? So it's not the ones that were displayed or on the highway, but were the ones that once you made the turn off the highway would guide you to your
So like four, a lamppost. One is second and central.
Yeah, one up by the arena or something.
No, because this is downtown.
Just downtown?
DBA issues.
It will be mainly downtown because our amenities are
I think seven.
So. Last but not least, are we going with ornamental sign posts or regular street sign posts?
You're asking like
They look really attractive on the drawings.
All right. All right. Thank you for that, Mr. Gates.
Thanks, Tony. If you don't have those drawings, thank you all of us.
All right, moving along. Go ahead, number seven. We have too much fun here. Written reports of council from corporate officers report recommendations all written reports of councils admitted to the June 2018 regular meeting be received. Please, Councilwoman Thomas, Councilwoman Ross, Councilwoman Hammond, and Councilwoman Butler.
Thank you, Mr. Merrick. So I've been quite involved with downtown businesses and when we had the actual event, during the event, we had a lot of out of town police here, a large police presence, probably about 30 access, which was really great. They kept the streets safe, they were controlling them, they were checking the people. Since their departure and our detachment is working at less than optimum levels, we've experienced a rise in incidents. And the house fire, there's been break-ins downtown, and I know that there's been some home flood victims that have been victimized once again by theft. I'd like to make a motion that council send a request directly to the recovery management team, the recovery manager, to promote on our behalf more police presence in this community until such time that we have our levels back up to where it should be, just to create. So I have a motion written. Whereas the city of Grand Forks has been severely impacted by the recent flood event, and our current RCMP detachment is operating at less than optimum capacity, leaving many of our homeowners and businesses vulnerable to property crime. Be it resolved that council send a request to the recovery manager asking that additional police resources be dispatched to the city of Grand Forks to bring us to a comfortable personnel level in order to effectively deter the ever recent crime and victimization of our community members.
I think you may have to raise that and have them have issued a provincial request to the government. Yeah, because they cannot directly request any further policing. They would have to initiate a provincial request to the federal government so that we go down to our government.
Well, we have, we have asked already. We have.
Yes, but I mean, if we're going to subsequently re-ask, we cannot ask manager of recovery to ask for that request. It has to be a request through the province. So initiate a provincial request.
Well, we've already gone that route. That's why I'm suggesting that we go through the recovery manager because we're not for
To our CIO.
Your worship, maybe you might want to add police or security because they may be able to have a little bit more clout to have security services rather than the police and that could let them come through the EAF possibly through the, through recovery process. So I think that will allow for a little bit of wiggle room into what we can actually get here.
Okay. A second for motion. If we could just get the Councilwoman Hammond, where do I need to see them at?
Okay, so we have to finish. All questions. All those filed and received. Any votes carried around? Move on to the, excuse me, motion that's on the table. Have a second, Councilwoman Butler?
Can we just have it read back with the, the little changes that we made there?
That's a great question. You don't need to weigh our ass sections.
No, okay, so, so the council send a request to recovery manager asking to make a provincial request for additional, that additional police resources be dispatched to the city of Grand Forks to bring us to a comfortable personnel level in order to effectively deter the ever recent crime and victimization of our community members or provide
Just say police or security resources.
Police or security resources.
Can you email that?
I can email it to
All right, Councilwoman Butler?
I know we already received reports and I just wanted to say that I asked them to notice the motion in my report. I think under Robert Schlesser's order, you don't technically have to make a notice of motion. Like with Councilor Hammond's proposal, it's an emergency resolution. As long as it has two thirds support of council, it passes. And giving a notice of motion, you only have to have the typical majority in order to pass your motion.
We already just had
Great. So I'm just saying, I'm putting forward a notice of motion just because I don't think it's an emergency resolution. It has to do with the legalization of cannabis coming out federally. When we had our public hearing, we heard from the public, a few people speak to the issue of not having any bylaw in place to regulate public, public consumption of cannabis. And that is in place in Washington State and other places. So originally council had talked about regulating, which is something that is under our permit to be able to do as a community. So at the next meeting, I was hoping we could put forward the motion that council direct staff to create a smoking bylaw to address the open public consumption of cannabis prior to legalization. And council can discuss what we'd like that to look like at the next meeting. If you guys just want to give us some thought until then.
So, Councilwoman Butler, can I ask, when you say a smoking bylaw, that does encompass also smoking in general or just cannabis?
I'll direct that through to staff. I believe that's how staff had looked at doing it in the first place. And then they said that they hadn't heard a lot of feedback on it, so they decided not to do it. And when I spoke to staff at the open house before the public hearing, they recommended that I put forward a motion like this in order for them to do a bylaw.
Because a lot of municipalities do in fact have smoking bylaws in place. So if we're going to put a bylaw like that forward, it must be comfortable.
So, may I ask?
Sure.
Is it, we're, say, can we see the testing regulations on where, because they're there. The tobacco. The tobacco, but would that not incorporate, that would not incorporate cannabis as well? No, because I support the idea. You know, I just want to make sure.
Thank you, Mr. Merrick. The health cannabis regulations do encompass cannabis as well as tobacco in that the provincial government has stated that anywhere tobacco smoke is prohibited, cannabis smoke is prohibited as well. In addition to that, they have outlined further provincial regulations that include parks and areas that are sectioned where children are frequent. And that includes the inside of motor vehicles for obvious reasons.
So if we were to initiate a tobacco bylaw, non-smoking, it would actually encompass automatically the cannabis. So our best protocol would be to initiate a tobacco, non-smoking area or bylaw. Is that not what you just said, that tobacco also encompasses marijuana?
Right.
And marijuana has additional?
And marijuana already has additional provincial, provincial
Right, but, so we have to decide whether or not we're going to take another step.
Right, so taking another step, like in Washington State, you can't just walk down the street smoking a joint. And we've had complaints from the business, business community here about the smell already outside, walking into businesses. So this bylaw in essence would be to prohibit the open consumption on the streets of cannabis, whereas you can walk down the street smoking a cigarette. So just making that differentiation or anything else that, I don't know, other members of council might have heard in other communities that they'd like to include in the bylaw could be discussed at the next meeting when this motion is brought forward.
But we don't have present legal smoking law.
It's encompassed under the
We don't currently have the smoking bylaw.
No, it's potential. It's already regulated, but we would add extra regulations for cannabis.
All right, hold on just a second.
No, I'm just putting forward a notice.
All right. All right, moving on to our next item, which is 8A, which is the report from council representative regional district through the boundary, which would be myself reporting for this week. It was council on the 13th of our last four meetings. Moving on to nine.
Question, where, is your Councilwoman Ross in a chance another policy meeting? I know that there hasn't been
There hasn't been any.
Are you able to maybe update the public on what happened to the other one? It's been a while since we've had one. But maybe you have reported that to the weekly. We haven't been there since, for three weeks.
You know, the RDKB meeting on 13th of April, I said it to the council. And that was the last prior to that was the DCDC meeting and the ones that I did the double report on last night.
Okay, so, I mean, I wish. Yeah. How often are they held?
There's two board meetings a month.
No, the policy group.
Whenever they feel that one necessary.
Okay.
Our next meeting is on the 28th.
At all.
All right, moving on to nine. Recommendation to staff for decision, the council liaison to regional recovery policy group from our chief administrative officer. The recommendation is that council determines to appoint, and then it's blank, and blank, as representative for the city of Grand Forks as participants of the regional recovery policy group to provide an informative conduit to their council members throughout 2018 flood disaster recovery process. And if I remember right, it was myself and Councilwoman Ross as the alternate as per RDKB.
So thank you, your worship. So this is part of the recovery process from Mr. Watts' presentation where it had the policy group up there. So there was a possible suggestion, but it still is a council decision to determine if it's going to be the same as the regional district because it is a regional piece for the recovery. So, you know, something that made council would want to consider is that the same persons that are involved with the regional district are the, are the policy group for the city. Just a decision.
I read that wrong.
Your worship, the, the C A Os have a different piece and then there's the, yeah, and then there's the operational committee and then there's also the policy group. So, yeah, yeah.
All right, discussion.
Um, is this, is it for the different teams, like the economic team, the, this is for over, are these? The overarching.
City Board. Counselor Butler.
I don't know if anybody else is getting confused from policy groups and committees. And so just to be clear, this is a different policy group now that we're in a recovery phase than, so maybe that other policy group that you were going to was only for the emergency phase and.
Yeah.
So this one is to report back to council on the basic developments within those other five groups they're reporting out so that we can have a representative within that structure to get information back to us, but also so that we can take, you know, motions forward to that reply we did tonight. To be heard at those groups?
I don't think it goes that far. It's actually that.
I think it should be two-way communication.
Yeah, well, I think initiative is like you have the major center core and then you have the C A Os, which would be the regional head from the city, maybe it's Goddard, and then you have the policy group, which again, area D director Russell and whoever.
So this policy, this district here should have some input into making decisions. Representing the city.
I don't know.
That's why they're all.
I don't know if that part has been established there for you, Mr. Watts, this evening.
That's what Ross would come.
So I believe, your worship, I know that this is a brand-new piece for us and we're just kind of putting this together, but I think the thought was is that policy group would be a participant within the bigger canopy of the group that we've got going on. There's all those different little pieces down below. It comes together. And then there's going to be a little bit of a, there's going to be committees for committees, for committees. But at the end of the day, I think that the main part of the policy group is to provide that conduit for council. So if there's some concerns that council has that they could give to that group, like the representatives and, and via the other way. So it's, it's to have that communication so council knows that there's this act of peace happening.
Right.
Your cabinet has it? What's that? Are you in the wings?
I just, I felt like a little cooler.
Oh, right.
All right, Counselor Butler, okay, it's Counselor Tripp and then Counselor Ross and Counselor Butler.
Thank you, Mayor Claver. I, I think this is probably something that all of us are, would be chomping at the bit to be involved in because we have all felt, you know, that we just haven't been getting enough information to make decisions. I do understand that the two of you are already on the R D K B and, and that puts you in this kind of a loop. But if at all possible, I would like to ask if I could be another alternate. And in the case that either one of you couldn't go or something like that, that I could jump in there ad hoc, if I could.
I don't know if there's two alternatives, but yeah, the suggestion is there of course.
Sometimes you never know.
You never know, I mean, that's always even in the R D K B moment. Kind of like that, to address as a second alternative.
So you, both of you will be attending these meetings. It's not like one of you is an alternate like with the R D K B. So it's quite possible that one of you won't be able to attend a meeting at some point. So it's almost like you're both representatives and then we would need an alternate for.
Are we able to send two?
I don't know if that would be the format. I think it's something we should.
Haven't been invited to one yet.
I think the attempt was to, to have at least, I choose to have at least two, one for sure and two representation, like just, just to have that answer a lot in. I don't know if that is, kind of, what the regional district is going to do as well. So I think that, you know, it wouldn't hurt council to have maybe a spare alternate. I, I don't think one to over the number of two because then you get a degree of where you have almost close to a forum of council in, in a piece there, so.
But they're, they're not, this doesn't ask for an alternate, it's just two people and then we would have one alternate. Yeah. The alternate would only attend three of the four. So this whole policy group thing is sort of, was sort of a, I call it like a body of, of participants, managers in the E O C with our C A O and the mayor. And I did ten policy meeting and that was like four weeks ago. And I haven't heard anything else. So even though we're all, I agree, we're all been so anxious. And I did attend a housing meeting that was not sanctioned, but I did sit in there and I was very welcome to be there. But probably wasn't politically incorrect for me to be there. But it was, it's so important because so much of what's going on is happening in our city, but we're not there because it's like, I understand they're doing really high-level work and they're gathering this information to write this report. We're going to get it in two weeks, we can make some decisions. But we do need, beyond just sending emails and questions, we do need to be there. And so I'm waiting for this, a meeting so that we can sit down and have an update and see what's going on. Where are they in the process? Because there's, it's been crickets and I think we're all really tired of hearing crickets. So, and I know there's hard work going on. I know the process is complex. But I, you know, I'm, I'm really hoping that there's, I don't even know the memorandum of understanding, what the terms and agreements are for this policy meeting. We don't, I don't even know what the function of it is. So I'm, it's a work in progress, maybe, but I'm going to go to this meeting and not really know what is expected. So, yeah, but I agree, we need an alternate because summer is coming and, you know, we may have to be called away to do other things. So it's, it's frustrating for me as well. I would, I don't, has anybody moved this motion? I don't think so. No. So I would, I would make the motion. The council determines to appoint Mayor Frank Comrade and Counselor Colleen Ross as representatives for the city of Grand Forks as participants of the regional recovery policy group to provide an information conduit to their council members throughout the two thousand and eighteen flood disaster recovery process. And be it further resolved that Counselor Barry Tripp be appointed as the alternate should one of the two appointees be unable to attend.
Yeah, so. Yeah, I just wanted to concur with what Counselor Ross said that, as we saw today at the meeting that we went to, there's a lot of people from out of town, different organizations that are participating in our community and doing a lot of work. And it's kind of embarrassing as counselors to not know all these details of what's going on. I mean, our community is representative, is elected us to represent them and they want us to have the answers. And when we don't have the answers, that's not acceptable. We need to be in there, not only bringing information back on what's going on, but also advocating for our constituents what they need to see going on in those groups. So it's really important that we have a strong voice. I think it's important that there definitely is two people there so that Grand Forks can take more of a lead in this. Not to say the regional district hasn't been doing a great job, but most of the impact has been within our community and we've had very little of the say of how our community is supposed to respond to this. So this is the missing piece that we've been looking for, to have that input in the E O C. And then we just need a meeting.
I need to, we need to second to our motion.
I, I definitely concur what you just said, Counselor Butler, because that's exactly what I was going to say. The community here, especially the city of Grand Forks, has been a major, major focal point of the impact that has occurred during this flood. Not, not seeing anything less for the regional district and area D. But having said that, definitely, without a question, we are the major components here that have been impacted on a majority level being business and homeowners in this community. And definitely, our representation is definitely required. And I don't know what the format is going to be on this policy group. I'm hoping that it's not only one representative from each area because then I would be quite upset.
You mean from each of the pillars?
Well, for just the policy group. Hopefully that they're not going to say that there is just one because then I will.
No.
Counselor Hammond.
So just in case you weren't aware, I've been attending the economic, I'm on the team with the economic and small businesses that are liaisoned the city through with the D B A. So we've been working closely with the Chamber and Community Futures, perhaps several meetings late last week. And this was, they had a meeting earlier this morning, which I wasn't able to attend with the same week that we met with at three o'clock. So they had taken our asks from what we had put together as a group to them this morning. And one of the things that they wanted was some funding, immediate funding so that they could employ a contract person as a revitalization coordinator for downtown business community who had boots on the ground, who could organize events and fundraising, who can offer the marketing and take some of the pressure off the backs of volunteer business owners who are trying to just get back up and running and run their businesses. So we're hoping that that will go forward. So that's where we're at with that. But we do have fundraising needs.
Get on, yeah, of course.
All right, so we have a motion on the table, second. All those in favor? So carry. All right. And we've done our information items. We basically addressed eleven A. So now we move on to information items. Subject matter is the Union of B C Municipalities, otherwise known as U B C M. It's a letter regarding council two thousand and eighteen resolution endorsed by the Association of Cutney and Boundary Local Governments, A K B L G. Then. Eleven C. Civic Info B C, again, two thousand and eighteen U B C M convention, meeting requests with the ministers of municipal affairs and housing. There, the recommendation is that council direct staff to book appointments and implement briefing notes for discussions on provincial participation and funding needs to address housing, displacement needs and economic development issues due to the flood disaster in the city of Grand Forks. Please, Counselor Butler, second, Counselor Hammond. Discussion, Counselor Hammond.
Just to go back to eleven B, the resolutions that were endorsed at A K B L G. Is it possible for you to read those three resolutions out? Because I think it's pretty vital to our community to know what, what has gone forward and been passed. And then maybe you'd like to read them since you drafted them up. Because when the community see that we have a large crime problem here and feel that we haven't done anything and, you know, the police issue, and just to let the community know that we have been really working hard in the background and having meetings with the police and the people above the police to try and get a bigger presence here. So maybe.
Thank you, Counselor Hammond. And this is one actually that I had my hand up to make just a small comment on. You know, I was talking to my husband, when you say bimonthly, what does that make you think of? And I, is that every second month? And thought the intent of the resolution was to get somebody here.
Twice a month.
Twice a month. So we may have just a need to clean up that one little word from bimonthly to semi-monthly.
You'll have to do that.
And, and, right, we can do that on the floor of the U B C M. And all of the background information and intent makes it very clear that we were wanting to have circuit court judges come in once every two weeks or twice a month.
To add to that, I think it's important to have that resolution or that amendment in writing so they can have it up on the screen before we get there.
Sure.
I mean, you can do it on the floor, but we may not do it on the floor.
We can make sure that happens with the U B C M resolutions.
People may not consider it friendly and then they might say, that's changing the whole point of the motion. Just say it was a, just say, you can, just say that's not.
No, exactly.
They want it every fortnight.
Right. So request for increased court access. Whereas the provincial government is committed to improving access to justice in the courts and appoints and pays judges for the courts. And whereas rural communities typically make do with a part-time circuit judge once a month, while hundreds of millions of dollars has been allocated to improving court access in urban centers, therefore be it resolved, the provincial government mandate increased access to the courts in rural B C by providing a semi-monthly circuit judge so that routine court matters may be dealt with in a more expedient manner.
Not me either.
I know, so. Bi-weekly, okay, so that's what we changed it to. And then the second one would be. amended criminal justice branch charges as much guidelines. Whereas criminal justice system is a foundation of Canadian society that plays an important role in maintaining a just, peaceful and safe society. And whereas in B C, police do not have authority to lay charges as in other provinces. And unlike other provinces, the B C Crown Council requires a substantial likelihood of conviction criteria for laying charges. Therefore be it resolved, the provincial government dropped the burden of proof criteria for Crown Council in the laying of criminal charges from a substantial likelihood of conviction to a reasonable likelihood of conviction. And that one's huge if we get that. And then the third one, the request for additional Crown Council lawyers. Whereas property crime rates have increased throughout the province and the more borderline criminal cases are not going to trial because Crown Council resources are stretched too thin. And whereas it is the Crown Council who lays charges and prosecutes in criminal matters. Therefore be it resolved, the provincial government increase the number of Crown Council lawyers to adequate levels to keep better pace with the growing criminal caseload. And may I just make a comment on this one? When I was at the A K B L G, they asked the resolutions committee at the A K B L G level asked that I provide some more information to describe what adequate levels would be. And I just very fortunately was able to find a document that was an assessment of the B C criminal justice system that they had advocated for themselves. So that very report suggested that they needed more adequate levels. And so it was just really fortunate that I was able to access that document. So then Bar Sahoda, who is the U B C M resolutions committee, he's a staff person, right? He asked me for that same information. I got that email from him about two weeks ago. And so I just sent him the very same information that I had sent the A K B L G resolutions committee. And he was very grateful for it. And obviously they felt that that information was enough, was enough background information to make this resolution stand the way it is.
Yeah, I just wanted to add quickly for the public's benefit that these were recommendations that were brought forward to us from the RCMP. This isn't something we thought up for ourselves. We just took what the RCMP needed and brought it forward to the provincial government for.
Bented all the work, we'll take all the.
So all those in favor?
Well, we already received those.
All right, moving on to eleven B. Subject matter civic info B C. Two thousand and eighteen U B C M convention, meeting requests with Premier Morgan and provincial cabinet.
Do you need to have the motion pulled out from?
Yeah, the previous one. All the question, I said, all those in favor? Hey, that was C. Recommendation staff book appointments and implement briefing notes, discussion provincial participation. That's the one we did.
Yeah, we first in sector, then Counselor Hammond jumped back to the previous motion. We're finishing this one up. We have the first in sector, we just have to go on.
Okay, so all those in favor? You want to hold? Carry. Okay, so we're now on eleven D. Okay, two thousand and eighteen U B C M convention, meeting requests with Premier Morgan and provincial cabinet ministers. Recommendation to council direct staff to book appointments with Premier Morgan and blank, and implement briefing notes for discussion with regard to support funding requirements addressing the ongoing community needs due to the flood disasters in the city of Grand Forks. Second, Counselor Ross.
The requires, what ministers do you want to do? I think we should, you should do Darcy. Like Minister of Mental Health, will we do that when we leave the posse? Might as well do. Mars would like. I mean, we're in, we're in a very curious place here. I think we need to, I mean, we might end up seeing foreign roads and, and housing together. But I do think we need to see Andrew Darcy. Again, again.
Exactly.
Well, we need to see them. We need to have them know. Do we want to meet with the RCMP?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Let's separate from this motion.
No, I just.
Yeah.
Just.
Counselor Bummer, please.
So what we have down here is basically focused in on flood disasters. So I think that the council can give us the idea of which ministers they want to speak to with regard to that. We may want to do another one for Minister Darcy, more kind of same as what we presented last year, unless there was something else. We're only going to be granted likely three or four appointments, so we have to kind of decide on which are more important, what we think we want to do to get our message across.
Would need more boards.
Who came with John Morgan? No, we weren't all here for that. It was a minister? It was actually elected.
No, it was an A D M.
Yeah, your worship, that was A D M, that was Tara Friday now or something like that.
But she was associated with.
We moved to three.
Yeah. All of that the same week, we'll make a rational decision.
Well, for sure, Morgan.
So, your worship, so in order for us to expedite this, we're going to kind of need these decisions. I think we have to have these two done by July thirteenth.
Well, could you say infrastructure, housing, and police?
Well, we want to put that motion forward.
Police is not a meeting with the minister, it's a meeting with the R C M P. Maybe the provincial community wants to bring that with.
Yeah. But bringing more motions forward to discuss social D V D.
Yeah, that would be amazing.
Okay, but that's not really saying that's.
Hey, well, John Morgan, Mike Farnworth, and Selena Robinson. They were all three directly involved. Mike Farnworth, Selena Robinson, I mean, they have a lot of roles there. Their comments were.
But I may add, though, that ministers become a safety, so it's for general, that's gateways of D V D, right?
I think.
That, I mean, depending on where we're at with this ask for additional security, that might be a pretty important.
Yeah, so we can do.
You don't ask for more.
Yes.
So what they'll do is, it's kind of a priority, so we look the importance between the same who are first or second or third, and so, you know, most of the time you're guaranteed likely three. I'm not quite sure if you can get a fourth in, but you can put in a fourth as a last priority.
Tell them it's a special requirement.
I was giving special services.
Alternate.
An alternate.
An alternate.
The premier was here. Farnworth was here too. I mean, Farnworth was here. But Farnworth is also a decent candidate. For Farnworth. And so I would, I would give, would be Farnworth, Robinson, and David Eady. I thought Robinson was. Oh.
Yep. Farmworth?
Yes, infrastructure. Okay, so I'll back up the bus. It was Selena Robinson, David Eady, and Gordon.
Or it's already, any of them's already.
Why do we need to see Farnworth? It's already you. And Farnworth, because we are number four.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good caveat, that we're a city and recovering from a state of emergency and with special needs. We're special. Well, how the province responds to us is going to set a standard and make it. And when I'm talking about these, it's the R C M P, I'm talking about the division.
Right. Yeah. We talked about that last year, we never did.
No.
So we should.
Yeah. And do you book those?
I think that comes under a separate letter.
Okay.
It's different than the traditional ones, and I think it came under a separate one, and we could choose if we wanted to. There, these are the ones that have the big deadlines for. That one, they'll become under a separate cover.
Okay, I just want to.
Okay, so, okay, we're meeting, so we can get this solidified. Premier Morgan, second. Selena Robinson, third. David Eady, and Mike Farnworth.
The number four.
Should that be possible? Okay. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry. All right, moving on to item eleven E, which is the Grand Forks and District Fall Fair. Subject matter is the in-kind support and funding assistance request. Recommendation, the council received a letter of request for the in-kind support and funding from the Grand Forks and District Fall Fair Society for discussion purposes. May I have a move, please? Counselor Thompson, Counselor Hammond. Discussion, Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, your worship. When we were first elected, we assisted the park in the park with the banner. Was that?
Not cool.
No. No, wasn't it? Your, your.
You're right.
But what did we, what did we contribute to that?
There's the half.
A thousand. Because they had funding for our services. So we, they asked a thousand, we gave a thousand.
Thirty-fourteen.
No.
It was fourteen.
Fifteen or fourteen.
Yeah. That's similar.
I'm just curious, is there anybody from the Fall Fair community here tonight?
What did they happen?
Just because, well, yeah, and that, so that's the thing, like, banner, we're having one created right now. Downtown Business Association is getting one named, I think, process for D V D, a hundred dollars, it's a two-sided, to go across Central Avenue, to say, you know, see what's in store with the downtown, you know, thanks for helping this building, kind of thing, just to keep some attention down to downtown businesses. But we're leaving space on there so that it can be peeled off easy enough, red area for an event. So like our July twentieth event that's coming up with this in the gold, street dance, that'll be promoted on that banner, and then it'll come off, and then the next time there's another event, that will be replaced and go on there. So I know with the G F I fence signs, if the fences, if the sign's been up for a long period of time, or if it's an old sign, you can't peel off, but sometimes you can put over top of it. So I know we have to do that with people that have changed addresses or have changed logos. So I'm just wondering if there isn't a way that they can overlay over top of the existing Fall Fair banner with the new dates, which.
Yeah.
Because it's just a matter of changing the date. I know they may have a different theme, they have a different theme right here, so that may be an issue. But if it's just the dates, then I would suggest that they talk to, help on signs about just changing the dates.
Counselor Bummer.
Yeah, I remember when we had this request come forward last year, we postponed it as well, because we didn't have all the information from the, from the Fall Fair. And they ended up making a presentation. I'm hoping it's early enough in the season that we could bring it back at the next meeting and ask them to appear as a delegation, because I'd like to hear more about it, too. I mean, it's a great event, and the demolition derby and everything, I want to promote it. But it would be nice to have them as a delegation, if it's possible.
Thank you. So just following up on, Counselor Bummer, could we refer that to staff to ask them to come as a delegation for the next meeting? Turn your book over.
Yeah.
Your worship, we can just get a hold of them with some communication, just find out if they are able to attend as a delegation, provide a little more information, and get them in the lineup, because we're July twenty-third of the.
Yeah, because this resolution is only for special purposes.
Yeah.
We're not making any of the statements. Okay, so all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Carry. All right, moving on to the bylaw section, which is third reading of zoning bylaw amendment twenty thirty-nine dash eight-one from Development Engineering Services. Recommendation, the council gives third reading to the zoning bylaw amendment twenty thirty-nine A one.
Sorry, I believe that there's an amendment that Mr. Watt had passed through to Mr. Gates, and he would like to present that to council prior to the consideration of third reading.
Go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Mark. I did also want to mention that any changes that council would like to make, this is the last chance before we open it for third reading. So the change that Mr. Watt wanted to make was in section eighty-four, to change the wording such that it read, or reads, a cannabis retail building entrance or signage may not face or be adjacent to a controlled highway, and cannabis signage clearly visible from the controlled highway. This would be municipal.
Can you read that again? Yes.
So, I don't know if everyone can see, but right now it reads the front face of the building, and any signage may be no less than fifty meters from a controlled highway. So the change would be instead of having an arbitrary fifty meters, which is not quite the intent of it, the intent is more accurately reflected as what Mr. Watt had suggested. A cannabis retail building entrance or signage may not face or be adjacent to a controlled highway, and cannabis signage may not be clearly visible from a controlled highway.
Since this is a legitimate business, it will be sued, do we have the right to stop a business from promoting itself with signage like any other retail establishment would? Because they were following the same rules, other than the distance from a highway, fifty meters, and the distance from a school, and the zoning, they met that criteria, do we have the right to stop them from actually putting out their own signs?
Yeah.
That's visible? And is it right that we do that?
It's right, but if you have the right, it's more of a burden question. It should be.
So one of the powers that means that has is to control signs within the municipality. So we would have the right, and of course, it is up to council as to what we include in the zoning bylaw. So right now, the way it reads, there would be that a ban fifty meters from the controlled highway. So of course, council could equally strike this section as change it to what Mr. Watt had suggested.
My only concern with that would be, so if you have a small strip mall, and you have a series of stores in it, and you want one that's a cannabis operation, they will not be able to operate in there because that strip mall is facing a controlled highway. So you're actually impeding their ability to have business like normal other businesses. So that's what possibly the legal ramifications would come in, because you're impeding them from operating like any other business. So if you're asking them not to face a controlled highway.
This is just, this is, this is part of our powers under zoning bylaws, is to be able to regulate what type of businesses operate in certain zones, and this is an overlay for those zones. So the strip of highway going through our town, the intent of this is to remove drug culture from the strip going through our town, to not have that advertising, promoting marijuana use on our main strip through the highway corridor. And I'd be willing to put forward that amendment. And I don't feel it's really changing the intent here that was originally presented, it's just clarifying it, because it was kind of worded with a double negative end, it was confusing.
Counselor Bummer.
I can see, as a municipality.
So we need a second around the amendment before we can discuss the amendment. One second.
Yeah. I can see not allowing golden arches or greatly huge neon signs on the street. You know, when you've got a setback, and we, but if, I mean, if they wanted to put a sign at the street level, or at sidewalk level, and then their building was situated fifty meters back, I wouldn't agree to that. But I don't think I would want to prevent them from having an actual sign on their building if their building is set back at least fifty meters from the highway.
Let me just follow up. We have an exact example. Taking the mall we have presently, which will be then called the Heritage Mall, for example. So now, if you didn't have fields in there, and you wanted a cannabis operation going in there, you are actually facing a controlled highway. So in this case, why, you see, the wording is facing a controlled highway. We're not talking about signage or distances, we're actually talking about facing a controlled highway.
Answers.
Yeah, well, even without the signage, the first wording, facing, so you're actually restricting, so you'd have to have that individual have his main entrance out of his back door. That's my concern.
I'm going to talk on this here, just a second. Well, there's lots of other areas in the city that are available for cannabis dispensaries. This is just limiting one strip of our city that isn't.
It could be a restriction that could be causing possible implications. Anyway, Counselor Trump, and then Counselor Ross.
Thank you, Mayor Crandall. And it seems as if it's the final time that we'll be able to speak to any changes that we'd like to make. And I know I'm changing, I'm a little bit off topic here of what we've just been discussing. But I did want to change, the want to ask, request for the change of retail sites from youth-related facilities to be increased from thirty meters to a hundred meters.
If you agree to a point of order, I think we have to speak to one amendment before we can, because otherwise we'll be scattered more than one of the places.
Okay, well, we'll.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, I want to discuss other things as well, but we don't.
Okay, so, Counselor Ross.
I don't support the amendment. I think that the fifty meter from a set controlled highway is plenty. You know, I just think, you know, it's, there's how many liquor stores you drive through our town, and there's, there's how many, three liquor stores?
Exactly.
And I, you know, I'm more, and one of those is Red Cross Children High School. And I, I don't, well, I don't, so, you know, I don't think we're worried about the drug culture, I think that's not really the language that I would see that's appropriate. I mean, I've been to plenty of places where they have, you know, a small little cannabis dispensary. We already have distance from one dispensary to another, it's not like we're going to have a strip mall of dispensaries. I don't think, I think we're a little fear-based here, and I'm just, I don't support it. I think what we have there in fifty-eight point four is quite adequate, and I don't think we need to.
Counselor Thompson, please.
No, I, I was second class.
For the amendment, okay, I'm going to call the question, all those in favor of the amendment, sorry.
Can we just have it read one more time?
Sure, and I'll, sorry. And I'll clarify a little bit, the intent as well, not so much to further restrict, it's to take into account the nooks and crannies of Grand Forks whereby something that's twenty meters off of the highway may not face the highway, and may not be visible from the highway, but it may be a storefront. Under the current wording, they would not be allowed to have a cannabis retail outlet. Whereas something that clearly faced the highway but was fifty-one meters away would be allowed to have. So the intent of the section was just to have a buffer on the highway, such that it wasn't overtly cannabis businesses for people driving through. Now, whether or not that's necessary is a good question, and I think that the council has debated that to a certain extent. The compromise between no buffer and some buffer that takes into account.
We're July 23rd.
Yeah, because this resolution is not for special purpose.
Yeah.
We're not making any of the statements. Okay, so all those in favor? Anywhere opposed? Carrie. All right, moving on to the bylaw section, which is third reading of zoning bylaw amendment twenty thirty-nine dash A one from Development Engineering Services. The recommendation is that council gives third reading to the zoning bylaw amendment twenty thirty-nine A one. Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I believe that there's an amendment that Mr. Watt had passed through to Mr. Gates, and he would like to present that to council prior to the consideration of third reading.
Go ahead. Thank you, Ms. Merrick. I did also want to mention that any changes that council would like to make, this is the last chance before we open it for third reading. So the change that Mr. Watt wanted to make was in section eighty-four to change the wording such that it read or reads, a cannabis retail building entrance or signage may not face or be adjacent to a controlled highway and cannabis signage clearly visible from the controlled highway. This would be municipal.
Can you read that again?
Yes.
So I don't know if everyone can see, but right now it reads, the front face of the building and signage may be no less than fifty meters from a controlled highway. So the change would be instead of having an arbitrary fifty meters, which is not quite the intent of it, the intent is more accurately reflected as what Mr. Watt had suggested. A cannabis retail building entrance or signage may not face or be adjacent to a controlled highway and cannabis signage may not be clearly visible from a controlled highway.
Since this is a legitimate business, it will be sued, do we have the right to stop a business from promoting itself with signage like any other retail establishment would? Because they were following the same rules, other than the distance from a highway, fifty meters and the distance from a school and the zoning, they met that criteria, do we have the right to stop them from actually putting out their own signs that's visible? And is it right that we do that?
It's right that if you have the right, it's more of a question. It should be.
So one of the powers that means that has is to control signs within the municipality. So we would have the right and of course it is up to council as to what we include in the zoning bylaw. So right now, the way it reads, there would be that a band fifty meters from the controlled highway. So of course council could equally strike this section as change it to what Mr. Watt had suggested.
My only concern with that would be, so if you have a small strip mall and you have a series of stores in it and you want one that's a cannabis operation, they will not be able to operate in there because that's their mall is facing a controlled highway. So you're actually impeding their ability to have business like normal other businesses. That's what possibly the legal ramifications come in. Because you're impeding them from operating like any other business. So you're asking them not to face a controlled highway.
This is just, this is, this is part of our powers under zoning bylaws is to be able to regulate what type of businesses operate in certain zones, and this is an overlay for those zones. So the strip of highway going through our town, the intent of this is to remove drug culture from the strip going through our town, to not have that advertising promoting marijuana use on our main strip through the highway corridor. And I'd be willing to put forward that amendment. And I don't feel it's really changing the intent here that was originally presented, it's just clarifying it because it was kind of worded with a double negative end, it was confusing.
I can see as a municipality.
So we need a second around the amendment before we can discuss the amendment.
One second.
I can see not allowing golden arches or greatly huge neon signs on the street, you know, when you've got a setback and we, but if, I mean, if they wanted to put a sign at the street level or at sidewalk level and then their building was situated fifty meters back, I wouldn't agree to that. But I don't think I would want to prevent them from having an actual sign on their building if their building is set back at least fifty meters from the highway.
Let me just follow up. We have an exact example. Taking the mall we have presently, which will be then called the Heritage Mall, for example, so now if you didn't have fields in there and you wanted a cannabis operation going in there, you are actually facing a controlled highway. So in this case, why, you see, the wording is facing a controlled highway, we're not talking about signage or distances, we're actually talking about facing a controlled highway. Yeah, well, even without the signage, the first wording, facing, so you're actually restricting, so you have to have that individual have his main entrance out of his back door. That's my concern.
I'm going to talk on this here.
Well, there's lots of other areas in the city that are available for cannabis dispensaries. This is just limiting one strip of our city that isn't.
It could be a restriction that could be causing possible implications. Anyway, council trip and then council.
Thank you, Mayor Cronin, and it seems this is the final time that we'll be able to speak to any changes that we would like to make. And I know I'm changing, I'm a little bit off topic here of what we've just been discussing, but I did want to change the, want to ask, request for the change of retail sites from youth-related facilities to be increased from thirty meters to a hundred meters.
If you agree to your point of order, I think we have to speak to one amendment before we can, because otherwise we'll be scattered.
Okay, okay, well, we'll.
Yeah, definitely, I mean, I want to discuss other things as well, but we.
Councilor Ross.
I don't support the amendment. I think that the fifty meter from a set controlled highway is plenty. You know, I just think, you know, it's, there's how many liquor stores you drive through our town and there's, there's how many three liquor stores?
Exactly.
And I, you know, I'm more, and one of those right across the street from the high school. And I, I don't, well, I don't, so, you know, I don't think we're worried about the drug culture, I think that's not really the language that I would see that's appropriate, I mean, I've been to plenty of places where they have, you know, small little cannabis dispensary. We already have distance from one dispensary to another, it's not like we're going to have a strip mall of dispensaries. I don't think, I think we're a little fear-based here and I'm just, I don't support it, I think what we have there in, in fifty-eight point four is quite adequate and I don't think we need to do that.
Councilor Thompson.
No, I, I was seconded.
For the amendment, okay, I'm going to call a question, all those in favor of the amendment?
Let me just have it read one more time.
Sure, and I'll, sorry. And I'll clarify a little bit, the intent as well, not so much to further restrict, it's to take into account the nooks and crannies of grand ports whereby something that's twenty meters off of the highway may not face the highway and may not be visible from the highway, but it may be a storefront. Under the current wording, they would not be allowed to have a cannabis retail outlet. Whereas something that clearly faced the highway but was fifty-one meters away would be allowed to have. So the intent of the section was just to have a buffer on the highway such that it wasn't overtly cannabis businesses for people driving through. Now whether or not that's necessary is a good question, and I think that the council has debated that to a certain extent. The compromise between no buffer and some buffer that takes into account storefronts or, or commercial locations might actually face away from the highway but fall within fifty meters of the highway. And this is the wording, is cannabis retail building entrance or signage may not face or be adjacent to a controlled highway, semicolon, cannabis signage may not be clearly visible from the highway.
Adjacent.
It's catchy. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? All is off. Councilor.
Thank you, yeah, I actually have two, I maybe we need to deal with one at a time. The first request to, request to change for the bylaw would be to change the retail sites from, that are from youth-related facilities from thirty meters to a hundred meters. Thirty meters in my, yeah, sorry, thirty meters in my opinion is just too close. And I think if we go a hundred meters from, I mean, just the example of the distillery that's across the street from the high school, I think some of us are rather disconcerted by, and I wouldn't like to see that happen with cannabis retail shops.
Yeah, I don't see the reason why there's any difference between fifty-three-three A and fifty-three-three B, fifty-three A where it makes sense. Logical sense.
Yeah, just quickly, yeah, just quickly, I just wanted to say this is also something we heard at the open house and public hearing, so I mean, it actually wasn't on my radar until I heard the public bring it up and when they said, yeah, it makes sense and I supported.
Councilor Abbott.
So I agree that, I'm good with that, a hundred meters. So a parcel law of a community use zone, well, that doesn't usually change, so, you know, that stays in place. But a youth-centered facility, what happens if you have a cannabis retail dispensary set up and somebody sets up a daycare seventy-five meters away or a yoga for kids or a dance studio or something because that location has rentals available and is suitable space? What happens in a situation like that where you already have somebody who's licensed, who has a business license and is already a physician? Do you tell that new business, no, they can't, they can't locate there?
I like the idea of a hundred meters because the kids get.
You're saying in a reverse now.
Yeah.
Yes, but you see, if the cannabis organization is there and they're respecting the hundred meters, it would be up to discretion of the daycare facility to say, okay, well, then I won't relocate it, you can't expect the cannabis organization to remove it.
Would our bylaw be enforceable?
What do you mean?
Would we give other business places to operate, youth-centered facility or business within a hundred meters?
Well, they're not contravening because they're not subject to this bylaw, the cannabis organization is subject.
Well, you're not contravening because we're opening up a business.
Dispensary is conforming to the hundred meters, but the other business has the option, if they want to come closer, am I wrong?
In that situation, the dispensary becomes existing non-conforming. And so if it ceases to be a, if that premise ceases to be a cannabis retail dispensary for more than six months, then it cannot go back to being a cannabis dispensary. But as long as it was there first, it remains existing non-conforming.
They're both.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly, so then we have the discretion of the daycare facility, if they chose to go closer, the cannabis facility is not contravening the bylaw because.
It's like people who buy property near an airport and then complain that there's too many planes.
Exactly, so you can move the airport.
Yeah.
So, okay, we're, okay, let's get back to.
Oh, I'm.
Who's the second? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Carrie. All right.
The kids will get more exercise.
So at the public hearing, there were a number of people that were concerned about the agricultural activity, how they mentioned that might lower residential property values, they talked about offensive odors and light pollution, and just the fact that production facilities may not be suitable for residential neighborhoods. We have very few areas in town that are really going to be available as an option for a commercial production. And so on behalf of those residents that brought those concerns forward, I would like to propose that there be no production, processing and distribution facilities within city limits. Sorry, production and processing facilities.
I'll second it for discussion.
Yeah, I can agree with that because our industrial tax rate is even higher than the commercial tax rate and it's at the high end. We need to encourage industrial development and we need an industrial tax base. I don't have a problem with the location and if it's owned industrial, then that's what it is. It'd be better than having a cement factory move in when you've got all the cement dust or, there's a lot of other things I can think of that would be a lot worse than a commercial grow-up.
I was, yes, I was asking, no production, processing and the way it's classified here in the zoning bylaw amendment is it puts production, processing and distribution together into the, the commercial and industrial areas. So that's why I said distribution in there, but if it was just production and processing and not distribution, then I don't know if it would fall into that classification there.
But you're, but you're proposing not in commercial or industrial, so in both.
Not in city limits. Not in city limits.
So cannabis production and processing would be prohibited.
Right.
Within the city.
Councilor Butler.
I was just hoping staff could scroll to the map, because my understanding was it was just those gray zones that were available for production. And when we looked at this at the public hearing and put in the hundred meter gap that had to be between a production facility and a residential address, it eliminated the one on the left and it eliminated a lot of the block on the right. And the only one that would really be fully available would be up top by the dump, that area up there. So I know there is a bit of space in that airport industrial area, but not a whole lot. Is that, is that right?
Can I get an answer to that question? I was just wondering if that was correct, is it just the gray zone that, or for production? Mr. Merrick, will you stop?
Thank you, Mr. Merrick. So to explain the map, the gray zones are the industrial lands. The red dot and the patching is the buffer from our residential and from the residential land in area D. So you can see, it does include the vast majority of the city that would be excluded. I don't believe Interfor has any plans to grow cannabis, nor Roxol, and certainly unless directed by council, it won't have a city works area.
You just rehearsed that, you're not utilizing your phone, you don't know what you're doing.
Similarly, that, you know, the runway will continue to be a runway. So there's a small portion. When you're talking about cannabis growing facilities, you're really still talking about an acre or two or many acres.
And huge, huge structures.
That's right.
So can we see that again?
If you want to sell it, it'd be a processing plant, I guess, right?
Because I would say production and processing are not fit to industrial in my recognition.
Yeah, the wording's very strict.
It encompasses too many factors.
No others are permitted, it's an industrial zone, so anything in industrial shouldn't be permitted, not just restricted to cannabis production necessarily.
But this is dealing specifically with the section, cannabis production and processing with.
Especially, yeah, exactly, so it should be very specific to the point of what we're discussing.
I, I would have to vote against this amendment simply because I know some of the complainants have indicated they're allergic or they have issues with the smell and the odors and the like, and at least one of those is not a city resident. So there would be nothing to preclude someone from purchasing acreage in area D that might be right next door, that that could be a problem in the zone and all the good things that would be, and we would have no control or say over that. And just looking at the areas, particularly in the airport area, I can't see anybody wanting to put in a grow-up.
Not spending that kind of money. Maybe the first one is sort of the rental cars. They're already there.
So, I mean, I appreciate what the intent is, but I can't support that.
So I'm going to call a question, all those in favor of the amendment? All those opposed? All right. All right, so. All those in favor? Yeah, we have a resolution, we're going to amend it.
Oh.
Okay, council gives third reading, the amended zoning bylaw amendment number twenty thirty-nine dash eight one, correct? Because we had one amendment.
Yeah, I would do the council gives third reading to zoning bylaw amendment number twenty thirty-nine dash eight one as amended.
As amended, as I said, yeah, amended. The amended amendment. All right, further that council direct staff forward the zoning, the amended zoning bylaw amendment number twenty thirty-nine dash A one to the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure for approval. Move it please, Councilor Thompson, Councilor Ross. Discussion, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Councilor Ross. Carrie. We have no late items.
Not really, just for discussion, we talked earlier about the good news of paving coming to town, that we're getting paving crew finally and Twenty Second Street is on the, on the agenda for paving in July, which is exciting to get that done, and also SilverKettle sidewalk, which is even more exciting after years, that will finally, finally be done, the contract's been awarded, so that's something to look forward to. And a good news item to celebrate is that we were surprised earlier at the economic development meeting, we need to celebrate our, our good news stories.
All right, we move on to question period from the public and the media. And again, please keep it, yeah, brief is a good idea too. Gentlemen and back.
Les Johnson, GFTB taxpayer. So I have two things, basically, first off, during the flood recovery update, you had mentioned, Councilor Butler, you had mentioned that, that you had been meeting with a group of individuals regarding rebuilding. Who is that group? You said you had, there was a productive meeting with a group.
Oh, that was this afternoon, all of the folks here attended that meeting at Community Futures and it was the Economic Development Committee, one of those bubbles that was on, yeah, and so there were representatives there from the province.
Okay, I just wanted to get clarification.
Yeah.
So the other piece, with the feds and the province downloading all this stuff on cannabis to you guys, it's, I can see it's going to your heads, I mean, really. The maternalistic instinct to, to still regulate something which is going to be illegal in a couple of months, as if it was still illegal. But as Councilor Ross pointed out, facing the highway, in fact, within spitting distance of a highway, there's alcohol distributions, there's whiskey production right across the street from the high school. And if you go to any judge or prosecutor in the land and ask them which creates more problems for people and communities, it's alcohol, it's not pot. So you, you, I have to ask, do you want to have the pot shops to have their front doors in the back lanes? I mean, if I live next to the highway, am I going to smoke it in my front room, do I have to turn around and face away from the road? Like, come on, it's hypocrisy. Now, let's shove them into the nooks and crannies of the retail spaces.
Plus, one point, Les, if I may interject, you had mentioned that the feds are downloading into municipality, they're actually not, they're downloading into the province first and that might trump everything that we're doing in any event.
Okay, yeah, so, good point. I was wondering though, it occurred to me as I was listening to this, and Rowley's not here, so he can't back it up, but is this a backwards plan to enrich area D by pushing all of the cannabis activities outside of city limits into area D?
That's where parking tickets.
Well, no, I mean, the stores, the production, the processing.
Stores are in town.
Oh, where in town, nobody's going to be able to find them. No, I'm just saying, nobody's going to be able to find them if they.
Like, and the commercial areas are downtown core, as long as there's a certain distance apart, you can't have them right next to each other, it is.
And they can't advertise.
Yeah, they can't, it's only on the highway.
Oh, I was just curious, you know, like, because it was just, it was so hard to tell with all of the back and forth. Oh, yeah, and I would suggest that, you know, for future, when the air conditioning breaks, maybe you can, you can get fans made with that nice city logo, because they'd make a perfect fan. So I'm watching people here and I'm thinking, I'm just the mint jeweler away from being himself. That was my two cents.
More like three.
Oh, anyone else?
Another question. With the, you mentioned about.
Pardon? Name andification, please.
Gene Cook.
Order.
All right, so with the location of a possible cannabis grow-up in the Vienna Woods area, there are families, there are children that live within a hundred meters of that area. So your idea of passing a bylaw that makes that area, that area where you cannot grow cannabis because it's surrounded by residential that does have children, wouldn't be a bad idea.
And it is that way because it is a hundred meters, right? So Vienna Woods would be a hundred meters.
It's, it's considerable.
It was outlined on the map there with the dotted line where it would encompass and it's.
But without being disrespectful, that's only speculation, there's no indication of any operations starting it. That's speculative, or we're saying that there could be growing operations occurring.
We're allowing that.
We're allowing it, but that doesn't mean they're going to occur there.
Okay, but if your zoning includes it for grow-ups, there's nothing to say, whatever business goes in there, there's multiple businesses that come and gone in that, in that area multiple times. What's to say that the business that comes in is still going to be there in three years, five years, seven years, and your zoning is now in place for cannabis grow-ups? And the residential does not want it. This is a time to provide some thought into that and set it aside so it's not for that purpose. And there are multiple other areas to put grow-ups, why do they have to be anywhere in the city?
Those possibilities are there too, but I mean, they could, you know, the business, yeah, there's, the buffers are in place and secondly, if that previous business does sell, all due respect, you could have a rocket science lab establish business there next too, doesn't mean it's going to be a cannabis one. to, it doesn't mean it's going to be a cannabis one.
But there's nothing stopping any business once it's rezoned to begin, you know, be in business for two years, a year and a half, three years, and then say, gee, we're not doing so well as the business we're in, now we're going to grow cannabis, and your bylaw has already allowed that to happen.
Sure, but in life, those are situations that we have to face.
No, you could face it a different way, you could just make it, set it aside so it's not a cannabis grow-up location.
But I think it has done that with the 100 meter.
No, it isn't.
But as I said earlier, I mean, this is something, again, that is still, could be trumped by the federal government and by the provincial government.
I know, but you have an opportunity to act on that now in spite of what the federal or our provincial government will do, so why not take that?
Well, council has made a decision, sir. Whether it's all they could or not.
That's the transparency we get time after time after time.
That was transparent.
Thank you very much.
That was transparent, we didn't hide it.
Transparency is when council does what it wants to do and not listen to the voice of the people.
Sir, I think council.
I don't want to hear your stories anymore, I've listened to you enough. So the point is, you're not listening to the people. We've, the whole Vienna Woods issue has been brought up for several months now, and basically you smart-talk us one way or another without listening to the people. Have you ever called a meeting of the people that live around the Vienna Woods or in the Vienna Woods? No. Have you ever had anything to offer them? No.
Have you taken your petition from only the people in the Vienna Woods, or have you gone all the way?
I've gone, it's gone through the people in the Vienna Woods and beyond, and there's 800 to 1,000 people who signed that petition, yet you pay no decree to them.
You just made a comment that did we ask the people in the Vienna Woods regarding cannabis? I just retract that.
You just had a fellow here last week from just across the road that's concerned about, he's upgrading his property, spending a lot of money on it, and you could devalue his property in the blink of an eye by having a cannabis grow-up in that Vienna Woods area.
I think the chances are very slim.
You haven't offered anything from the other towns or communities that have cannabis grow-ups in them, we've got nothing really to base it on, you've offered nothing that way, so. I believe it's you that should rethink your position, not us rethink ours, and that goes for all of your council.
Thank you.
Just my comment would be that I did make the, tried to amend the bylaw so that we would not have production within city limits. I could see excluding just the airport area and leaving the dump area open for production because stuff there is, there is a great new residential there, and that would certainly, I think, appease the property owners who do live down in around the airport area in residential.
I understand that, but bearing in mind, again, I must emphatically say this, that the industrial areas are the highest tax base, and in every other community now, even in Lumbee, they're proposing to put a huge grow-up, and it's also in the industrial area. Why? Because it's the highest tax base. Greatest revenue for the taxpayers in this community come from where we can get the highest tax base commitments, and that helps the citizens, and we do have our buffers in place, so.
Sometimes financial decisions, there are other things that weigh in to financial decisions, social decisions, decisions about these properties.
I understand, but at this crisis period we're going through now, we've got to try to get everything tax over.
No, and it was debated and debated, so.
It can't be brought back to the table, I voted in favor of it.
Les, did you have something to add?
You basically said, I mean, at this time, we're facing, I don't know how many years of financial hardship as a community and individually, and the idea that we would turn our back on what would probably be a high tax rate paying business just because we have some unresolved issues over it.
That makes sense.
Yep, I fully understand, I mean, as mayor, I'm looking for the tax benefits, we have to, that's how I'm going to safeguard our community, especially now with the crisis we have, we don't know how much funding we're going to get from the governments in general, so we got to try to get as much as we can here and not turn business away.
Yes, I came here as an independent voice, I don't want to get into your longstanding conflicts that you have in council, but I am a proponent of Vienna Woods, and I do that, I'm enema to this fight, just because I'm so sick and tired of the sorry state of affairs on our mountains. So I'm urging you to look at the Fed Marshall reports, which I think is objective and square up, and it just makes the case that you have a small six and a half acres that would be well, well advised to be set aside as an urban rural forest. Now, a perfect example of what we can do once we start putting the public interest first for another six and a half acres is the Nature Trust property that we spent six and a half acres to exclude the cow. These small issues in small ways add up to our quality of life, so I hope that this injury, and that same argument you have, it doesn't lose, we don't lose an opportunity to make a strong pitch on the Vienna Woods issue. I mean, I know you guys have been in a war here for about six years and hasn't gone unnoticed, we used to be a valley where you had a pretty good chance of creating a coalition of all the stakeholders, we've lost that, that's gone, it's yesterday, and moving forward, you are our rock by virtue of six voices and a mayor. Better to absolutely pursue reason, thought, and due diligence, it doesn't matter the issue, we need you to be on site and look at these issues objectively. The meeting's long, and people are tired, and the tempers are short, so I think we need an opportunity to make that pitch, and hopefully we can find a way to listen to the veteran angels of our nature, because it's not Vienna Woods, we've got no end grief on our mountain.
Councilor Thompson, and then councilor Butler.
Thank you, Barry, for your comments. You may or may not be aware that the majority of the Vienna Woods proper is owned by School District 51, and I think a portion of it is owned by another, the regional district of Clidieboundry. So the land that the city has just sold has a very, very little vegetation on it, so coming to council with those concerns, I appreciate that, but I think it would be better served if you addressed it to the school board of trustees and to the regional district to encourage them to dedicate those properties for Nature Trust or whatever that you're wanting to save, so.
I think the issue here by far in a way is, we're losing trust with governments, it's not here, it's a national issue, in fact, if you read some of the recent reports, and we need to feel that, and all of these environmental issues, that we need an input, I mean, our forests, our grassland, our water, our parks, everywhere we look, we've got a problem, so I don't, we just somehow have to get the anger out of this and look at the plus minus on the whole argument, we're not, we urge you to think that way. As I said, there was a time that we could get area C, D, C and D, Chamber Commerce, our M L A on site, get city, city was the rock, that game is done. You are our only hope, and transparency and accountability, as we all know, is the game.
But it's a two-way street.
Yes, yes, absolutely, I don't deny that. If I was asked to participate with rain staff and the memels today, that wouldn't be easy, but I would say on one condition, we're going to look at the facts, okay?
Yeah, I was just going to say that this is an issue that council's been looking at for the last couple of months, and it's been in camera, so we haven't been able to speak freely about our position on the sale of this land, but unfortunately now it is sold, it's done. So I guess at this point, the developer would be the person that you need to be talking to, to be advocating that they develop in the most green light possible.
My only comment to that statement would be, not that we're not fortunately, fortunately it has sold for a great benefit.
Sorry, do I give away my question?
Not unfortunately, fortunately, we're fortunate to have such a huge development period. Councilor Hammond, and then the lady in the back, and then maybe in the second row.
Yeah, Barry, thank you for your comments. Just that we have been discussing this over the past few months, and we have had environmentalists go in there, and they've been ongoing, determining whether there's nesting birds in there or not, and so we've been fully cognizant of the environmental impact that any development would have on that piece of property, that was determined that a lot of those trees that are within that piece that always belongs to the city were danger trees. There, I think there is one nesting bird in there now, but there will not be any development going on until such time that the bird is gone. A lot of those trees have come down from info and pose a threat, they've been assessed, but like I say, the number of trees that are actually on city land is minuscule compared to the, we probably have 20% of that forest, which isn't really viable, whereas the RDKB and School District own the other eight inches in it. So that's where, if you want to look at salvaging that for a nature reserve and keeping that intact, but the portion of the city property, we're not even sure that any trees are coming down on city property, because there's enough bare land there good without having to take down trees, so we're just going to wait and see the pockets, but there is an environmental study been taken on since March, and it's still ongoing.
And the owner has given the assurance that he would still be working with biologist Jenny Colel, and still following up continuously on that subject matter, so it's not a done deal because it's sold, then you're just going to abandon anything on that nature.
Well, I appreciate your honest comments.
The lady in the back, and then the lady in the front, and then.
Thank you for being, thank you for my opportunity, Julie Carter-Glad, who did a presentation a couple of weeks ago, and I appreciated the opportunity, but tonight I did, we did ask, is it not possible to have that letter read that I, that we did request? There is a submission of at least 19 pages included in there as well, but that was presented at the presentation, but I just would like to ask if there's still any possibility of having a referendum to ask the people, because I would suggest that the majority of the people here tonight, if they want to stand, are standing strong for Vienna Woods and for all of the research that we done, we did, those 17 to 19 pages of research is just a snippet that incorporated many, many aspects that we too have taken into account, and we can totally appreciate what you're saying about the economic development within that area, but as the letter stated, we believe that both needs can be met, we are suggesting a viable option that the potential business operator be offered a non-forested city-owned lands for sale, there is that available, why is it not possible to just consider this and to speak to, listening to the people, all of these people, the majority of the people here I know for certain are here for this reason, as they were on June 11th at the regular meeting, I just wonder if it's still possible to have, to have that option?
Absolutely not, sorry to cut you off, but absolutely not, we are no longer the owners of the property, so, absolutely not, you're talking to the wrong people at this point in time.
Not even off, what about, but around the election, at election time?
No, we have no more control over that property, which part of that, with all due respect, you don't understand, it's sold, we do not own the property, we have no more jurisdiction, no power whatsoever, it's owned by another owner.
Okay, thank you. Also, just to address some, councilor Thompson, too, here, about the school board property, they weren't offering it for sale for anyone, so that, why would we want to approach them when we don't have an issue with them?
Not yet, not yet, you're not sure of any, so, there's no assurance.
Well, they might not be desperate for money like this would be.
Is there any other?
You know, councilor Hammond brings up there's only 20%, whatever the property is left tree, the truth is about with the six and a half acres thereabouts, the city had and the school board property had, that was 50%, it was during the time that the city removed those trees that the percentage dropped to where it is. So in all fairness, and from the promises the city made back as far as 2004, that should still be 50% of the property, so to negate that position is not a correct statement.
That's the facts today.
And, 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 sir, again, with all due respect, it's a done deal, we have no more control of the situation at this point in time, the property is sold, and I would say that the rest of it is beating dead horse, with all due respect.
And when will the details of the sale be made available to the public?
Pardon?
When will the details of the sale?
That would be up to the owner.
Pardon?
That would be up to the owner, that is not in our discretion to release any details.
And when can the owner be?
You might see him working on his property, you go ahead and introduce yourself.
We have no, we have no input whatsoever at this point in time, and.
There's registers of property transactions.
We cannot reset.
Yeah, but he can plot it out by just.
What happened to the offer of another piece of property for this buyer? Was that explored at all? Did you, did you approach him with that?
It was, it's a mute subject.
No, it's not mute.
It is.
Answer the question, please.
It's a mute, it's been sold, it's done.
What happened to that offer?
The offer is there, if you wish, it's approached as a subsequent second property of means.
As an alternate is what was talked about.
It wasn't interested, so, that's it. The value held merit for the corporation of what was going on, given return the corporation into the community, so we acted on it, it got sold. We made that final closing. Any other questions?
May I just thank.
With all due respect, if you're going to be speaking about Vienna Woods.
No, I just, I would like to thank, thank all of the people that came here in support of this now and in past, and through the petitions, the 200 people had written ones and the online, and hundreds, and also to neighbors helping reduce here, I want to thank all of you very much for supporting each other and us and coming out, and some of them also affected, many of them by the floods, and just I would like to thank them and, and, thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to your councilor Butler, I know a number of people have wondered whether you have some inside information that none of us know, when you floated that question about the idea of McDonald's, or are you just taking the temperature of the community?
I brought it up at when we had the Tim Hortons development coming in, that if this was going to be a trend, that we were going to see fast food restaurants, and I wanted to see the community's point of view with the Tim Hortons going on central, I wanted to know how the community felt about it, and unfortunately I got the 50/50 split, I was hoping to have some clear direction, and there was good feedback from people, you know, about discussions with economic development and the flood situation, and I didn't want to put my own personal opinion out there about it, I wanted to get an honest feedback from the public, and I didn't want to get into it with them, because I mean, I just want to represent what they want, it's going to be tough when it's 50/50.
But people are wondering whether you know something that we don't, or whether you were just taking the temperature of the community?
Taking the temperature.
Okay, that's it, thank you very much.